Just let it snow when you're ready.
Hey.
All right, it's all set to go.
All right.
Okay, thanks. Good evening, everyone. Today is September sixteenth, and this is the meeting of the Northborough Planning Board. My name is Amy Peretzky. I'm the Chair of the Northborough Planning Board. This meeting tonight will be fully remote, but there is a link on the main page of the town website. If you go to that and there's a calendar button and click on that, you'll see our meeting listed. On that meeting agenda, you will see a login. So if any residents are joining us tonight and watching via YouTube and want to connect to make a comment or a question, you can go to our agenda online to connect. With that, first on the agenda is, let's see, I know I had it right here. The definitive plan endorsement and covenant for zero, two hundred, two twenty, and two fifty southwest cutoff. Okay, I see three people in the attendee. I think James, I'll bring over.
And Wayne Kimball.
And Wayne Kimball. Okay, I think I promoted them to panelists that are allowed to talk to. Okay. So Lori, can you just explain tonight what is requested of the planning board tonight as far as this agenda item?
Sure. As you may recall, several months ago, you folks approved the definitive subdivision for the property on Southwest Cut Off that's at the sand and gravel pit. And the next step in the process is for you folks to approve the final version of the definitive plan. So there were some conditions of approval that said that they had to make some modifications to the plan. So they have done that. And the plan has been reviewed by myself as well as Vinnie Bignalli, our conservation agent, to ensure that they also complied with some conditions that were in the stormwater management permit. And then as part of the definitive plan endorsement, they have to provide a performance guarantee. There are three different types of performance guarantee that they could provide, and they decided to opt for a covenant. So essentially what a covenant is, is it's a legal, legally binding promise that they won't sell the parcels away from each other and they won't essentially be able to get any lot releases. So they won't be able to get any building permits until they have fully constructed the roadway that will and the associated improvements that will serve these two lots. So typically what folks do is they they put up a covenant and then they build the roadway to the binder course of pavement. And then at that time, they ask for a release of the covenant and they put up an alternative type of performance guarantee, which typically is either a surety bond, cash, or a tripartite agreement. So that's where we are at this point. I'm happy to answer any questions. Possibly James can explain the changes to the definitive plan if you're interested in that.
James, do you mind?
Sure, let me see, start my video.
Well, he starts it. So Lori, for them to release the covenant, it comes back to the planning board?
Correct. So there are a couple of different things. If they're looking for a lot release, that would be a different document than if they're looking for a full release of the covenant. So I would not recommend that you grant a full release of the covenant until A, all of the improvements are satisfactorily constructed, or you have accepted another type of performance guarantee first.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I can explain the changes if you'd like. Okay, this is Jen Alanti from Land Design Collaborative. So there was just a couple of minor changes that were a condition of the approval. We added iron pinned monumentation to all of the property line corners, which were not shown on the latest approved plans back in March. So we added those. We added a ten-foot wide access drive to the detention basin. And then we also added a four-inch-thick concrete sidewalks. We had shown bituminous sidewalks on the plans. And I believe the board requested them to be concrete, which we agreed to. So we made that change as well. And then there was some information requested on one of the stormwater units, which we clarified on one of the detail sheets. So that was essentially the changes that were made to the plans. And then obviously Lori explained the covenant, which was also submitted to the to the board.
Okay, thank you. So Lori, you mentioned that they had satisfied all the criteria. So you don't have any more questions?
I do not.
Okay, does the board have any questions?
Sure, Carter. Just to check, so is this is this a continuation of something from before I was on the board, or is this now a new item?
It's it's a continuation.
Okay, so should I abstain from the vote?
No, you can vote on it. It's not a public hearing. So essentially, several months ago, gosh, was it January, February timeframe?
The decision was issued in March.
Thank you, March. So in March, the planning board rendered a decision. And so once they render the decision, the next step is the definitive plan endorsement and the performance guarantee. So those two steps are necessary in order for them to begin construction. Now, it's my understanding that they don't intend to construct this subdivision. So the the point of the subdivision was essentially to freeze zoning. But things change, so we have to operate under the understanding that they may eventually construct it. So this this is the step. Once the definitive plan is recorded, that is what effectively freezes the zoning. So this is a crucial step for them.
And this is good for eight years?
It is, yep. So they have eight years to build it.
And if they didn't in eight years, they could ask for a continuance. If nothing has changed, they could extend it.
Correct.
Okay, does anybody else have any? You have some more questions?
Can I just get like a brief explanation of what exactly this is? I'm looking through the material. So is it like, is it just to divide the parcel?
Jim, could you bring up the subdivision plan?
Yep, happy to.
So a definitive subdivision, the difference between a definitive subdivision and an A and R is the construction of a roadway.
Okay.
So in this case, they're proposing to construct a tiny cul-de-sac. And that tiny cul-de-sac is what provides the frontage. So they want to divide the property into two buildable lots.
Okay.
So that is, so what the planning board reviewed essentially is the how the roadway will be constructed.
Okay.
And there's stormwater drain, stormwater mitigation that went along with it.
Okay, that makes sense. And then so it's basically so this on the the other document said like they have eight years and then what happens, I guess, if they don't do this within eight years?
So the zoning freeze is for eight years. So when this this preliminary plan was given to the town, when they originally applied with the preliminary plan, this property was zoned for industry. And then a couple of years ago, we changed the zoning for this area. So now it's the highway business southwest district. So they're not sure whether they want to go with the new zoning or whether they want to do an industrial subdivision. So they wanted to freeze the zoning in order to keep their options open. So they have eight years to build it. And then at the end of the eight years, they could ask the planning board for an extension for good cause. And the planning board can decide at that time whether they want to grant the extension or not.
Okay, and then so if this would be just building the roadway and then they could do anything that there that would be allowed in the industrial for this for eight years?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we would have to come back to the board for site plan approval at that point anyway, so.
Yeah, and any special permits.
Right, yeah, potentially, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, good questions. Any more, any other questions?
No.
Okay. Hearing none. Do I have a motion to accept the covenant for the land shown on the plan entitled definitive plan industrial subdivision for zero, two hundred, two twenty, two fifty southwest cutoff dated November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, last revised August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, prepared by Land Design Collaborative?
That moved.
Okay.
Second.
Motion. Okay, roll call vote. Millie Milton?
Aye.
Bill Pierce?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Carter Brennan?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Do I hear a motion to endorse the plan entitled definitive plan industrial subdivision for zero, two hundred, two twenty, two fifty southwest cutoff dated November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, last revised August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, prepared by Land Design Collaborative?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Millie Milton?
Aye.
Bill Pierce?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Carter Brennan?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, thanks, everyone.
So I'm gonna need a minimum of three of you to come in and endorse the definitive plan, Mylar, as well as the covenant. And a couple of you still haven't come in to sign the Registry of Deeds signature page. Yeah, so Anthony, you definitely have to be one to come in. And I can't remember who the other person is, maybe Carter?
Maybe me, yeah, I can come tomorrow.
Okay.
He'll see birds with one stone on that one.
Three birds.
You just you just volunteered. Thank you, guys. Okay, thanks.
Great, great. Thank you to the board. Thank you to Lori for your work on this. Appreciate it.
Thanks, James.
All right, take care.
Good night.
Bye.
All right. So I just have to remove them as panelists now? Do you know how to do that, Lori?
Done.
Okay, they disappeared. Yeah, next on the agenda is the public hearing pursuant to forty-eight five on proposed amendment to the zoning map that will rezone the portion of Residential C District located at one sixty-seven Main Street, Assessors Map fifty-three parcel seventy-three, zero Main Street, Assessors Map fifty-three parcel one fifty-five to the Business East District. So this is the White Cliffs rezoning public hearing. I will start by reading the public hearing notice. Let's see. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, the Northborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, at six o'clock for the purpose of seeking public opinion on a proposed amendment to the zoning map that will rezone that portion of the Residential C District located at one sixty-seven Main Street, Assessors Map fifty-three parcel seventy-three, and zero Main Street, Assessors Map fifty-three parcel one fifty-five to Business East District. The complete text of the proposed amendment and proposed zoning map are available on the Planning Department webpage at www.town.northborough.mass.us/PlanningDepartment. And then there's also a link to connect. Do I have to read that part of it?
No, I I don't. I don't think so.
Either way, I mentioned at the beginning that this is fully remote. So if you want to, if anyone else just tuned in and you're on the YouTube and you want to connect, you go to the town website under the calendar and you can connect to join the hearing if you have comments or if you have questions. I see Lori has the map up. Okay, we did discuss this at our last meeting, but Lori, do you have anything to add or any information you want to mention about this?
So just a little bit of background information. So the White Cliffs Mansion is this very faint blob that you can see under the words White Cliffs Mansion. And you can see that that building, the building itself, is located in the Residential C District. And unfortunately, the Residential C District is very limiting. It's primarily a single-family residential district. So the reason why, of course, you folks know and many in the public know that the White Cliffs Mansion was an event venue for very, very long times, for over seventy years. It was used as either a restaurant or an event venue. And the reason why it was able to be used that way is because that use predated the adoption of zoning in the nineteen fifties. So it was allowed to continue for all these many years because it was used consistently during that period of time. But as you know, the mansion was abandoned as an event venue in two thousand fourteen. And it has been an unoccupied building since that time. So it has lost its grandfathering status. So in order for it to be reused as an event venue, there are two options. Either the land would have to be rezoned to allow a restaurant use or they would need to seek a use variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. So it was decided that rezoning the parcel would be the best-case scenario because that way the townspeople, the voters, would have the opportunity to express how they felt about the use of this property as a commercial use as opposed to a residential use. So you can see that these stripes, the blue stripes denote the area that I'm talking about. So the blue portion of the parcel shows that half of the parcel was already in the Business East District. So the idea here is just to put the entirety of the White Cliffs Mansion parcel and the abutting parcel within the Business East District.
Hey, thank you. Does anybody on the board have any questions? Carter, yep?
I don't know, just if any of us would know or if anyone would know, like, why the whole parcel wasn't included in it when they were creating the zoning?
I've been scratching my head about that for a very, very long time. I have no idea why they wouldn't have included the entire parcel, especially because it was already being used that way. It's very strange. But of course, that decision was made in the nineteen fifties.
Okay.
I was wondering if it was made in the two thousand and nine redistricting. You know, they decided which parcels were going to be moved over to business and which ones were staying residential when they they redid the map. And I do want to think I read something from Kathy Jewbert, but I can't remember off the top of my head. I do see Tom Reardon raising his hand, so he might know. I'm gonna allow him to talk. Hi, Tom, can you state your name and address?
Yes, can you hear me all right?
We can.
Yes, Tom Reardon, Seventh Sunset Drive, Northborough. I was involved in the committee that worked on the redoing of the zoning maps and the bylaws back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. And one of the goals was to rationalize the zoning as it related to property lines. So they they attempted to push the property lines or the zoning to the back of the property line. That's why it appears so irregular on this map. Because before there was just a line that would created a lot of two-zoned properties. And the Zoning Board of Appeals was overburdened with resolving all these two-zoned issues. I don't know why White Cliffs was divided this way because it went against the intention of the revisions in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. But I'm certainly in favor of.
I did go back through the zoning maps to find out how it was zoned many, many years ago. And at least in the nineteen sixties, it was split zone.
Okay, so probably it was a holdover. Okay, that's that's all I had to add. Thank you very much.
I mean, I'm wondering if, I know that the whole neighborhood behind it was built. I probably knew it in the nineteen sixties, and I'm wondering if they were concerned or if people would be concerned still today if if they had to rezone a large parcel that, again, in the event that the mansion is no longer there at some point in the future and people wanted to build new things, they wanted to keep it closer to Route twenty as opposed to the neighborhood.
That would be my guess, too, it sounds like. And they probably would have finished that lot in the back as houses.
Yep.
Or kept it as open space. Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it up to public comments. Okay, see, Lisa Mucelli. I'm gonna unmute you. Could you just say your name and address?
Lisa Mucelli, thirteen Maple Street, speaking as a resident. There's a couple of things, obviously. My house was also one of the homes that had split zoning, where part of it was commercial and part of it was residential. With the White Cliffs, if you notice, it's really not half. It's probably it's two acres of of business was in the front and the rest was was set for residential. And when the development went into Weston Estates, I guess that's what they call it, it wasn't thought of as being a full commercial area just because of the developer owning both lots or more majority of what the White Cliffs land used to be. So he split up the development, the subdivision, and the housing that abuts the land to the White Cliffs is very, very close to the lot lines with the thought in mind that that would still be kept as residential. So for my way of of looking at what's happened throughout the years, because I've written bylaws, certainly in business O B, and gone to town meeting with it, that my recommendation would be because you have two options. You have the option of going to the ZBA and having the the use variance request granted, that it would be a safer thing to do for the residents in the areas that surround this White Cliffs land that's in question and keeping the zoning as it is. Because if you look at that map and then you color that area that's all striped right now, you'll see how all of a sudden the commercial juts into the residential area. And there's a lot of things that happen with that closeness of commercial to residential. I obviously have experienced a lot of that myself. What people don't remember or don't necessarily realize, if they do not have a lot line that abuts a commercial area, is that there's a lot of noises and activities that happen that it's not normally residential noises. In my case, I have a bank and I'm happy it's a bank and not a eight-bay gas station and twenty-four-hour seven-eleven. But I do have with the bank, just the other day at four thirty in the morning on Sunday, somebody in a motorcycle decided he wanted to take some money out of the bank. So I heard the motorcycle revving the whole time he was there. They used to actually make sounds from the kiosk of the bank with the buttons. Now they've since turned that down, which is, you know, one of the times where my lot line, my bedroom, is twelve feet from the lot line. So I do hear everything that goes on on that lot. Across the way on one thirty Main Street, there's a ten apartment complex, ten apartment complex, plus the two or three buildings that are there used for commercial and the mixed-use lot. Again, Wednesday mornings between four and five, the Harvey dump truck comes in and he picks up the canister from the ground and shakes it and it clangs and bangs and wakes you up. Those are two things you don't think about when you're making those kind of decisions. It's how the residents then live without having their right to quiet enjoyment thought about. So when you look at the number of houses that are on Weston Terrace, you have to wonder how much of a property that would be turned into commercial will affect their right to quiet enjoyment. We're hoping, the town is hoping that we can do something with White Cliffs. And I would hope something good is going to be done there. But if, for whatever reason, and because of the economy and because of everything happening, what if this company cannot keep the business or doesn't want to keep the business? And they sell it. And they then they could either sell that or if they've already bought the land, they can sell the lot that they wanted to if that's part of what the restriction, the preservation restriction allows them to do. That hasn't been written yet. We don't know. I don't know what the particulars of the restriction. But because it was purchased originally with CPC money in two thousand sixteen, or that's when the town meeting was, that restriction means that you really can't just sell the land outright, to my knowledge. So making a long story longer, I would still, I would still prefer to err on this caution of the residents who live back there and not change the zoning and leave it as it is and then let the business go ahead to the ZBA and and make their the variance request at the ZBA. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We had discussed it, Lori. You had mentioned that it would be a use variance or it would be a change of zoning. Do you know the ideas behind changing the zoning? Because it does make sense to do the use variance, but I was just wondering. All of a sudden, at the next meeting, it did come back to us and it was, we've decided to just not do the use variance and change the zoning.
So the use variance, so the bar for the use variances is pretty high. So essentially, if if you're getting a use variance, you have to demonstrate that you have a hardship owing to shape, soil conditions, topography of the land, and then there are a couple of other criteria having to do with. Uh, soil conditions, topography, the land, and then there are a couple of other criteria having to do with. Not um. Uh, causing a nuisance to the butters and still um uh being in harmony with. Uh, the intent of the zoning bylaws. So the thought was that um it it was. Maybe unlikely that they would be able to meet all of the criteria for use variance. And uh so if the the voters were interested in. Having this property used uh as an event venue. Uh, then the rezoning is the best path forward. So as you know, this property is owned by the town. So the intent is to lease the property. So the ownership would be retained. It would be to lease the property to um the event venue. And then the event venue would go to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit for a restaurant. Uh, with alcoholic service uh as well as site plan review. So the town still would have a lot of say. Uh, in how the property is developed, uh mitigating the impacts uh on the butters. Um, and you know, if certainly the town feels that this is a. Uh, use that would be detrimental to the neighborhood, then uh they they I imagine. Um, it would not be authorized to lease the property to Elegant Banquets. So. Um, this seemed like the most appropriate path forward because of course it is going to town meeting. And at that same town meeting, there's gonna be a discussion about whether the property can be leased to Elegant Banquets. And also uh whether uh there would be a TIF offered. Um, to defray some of the tax burden um for the property.
Okay, thanks. Millie, I saw you had your hand up. Are you all set?
I did, yeah. Lori addressed it that this is a lease and not a purchase. Um, and I did also wanna mention that when the those houses behind. The property were built, it was at that time a functioning uh event venue.
Okay, um Bill, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, I think, you know, to Lisa's point, right, the law of unintended consequences, we have to be careful of here. Um, I was just looking through the the zoning and a couple of things that are allowed by right. In Business East would be um mixed-use buildings. Um, as well as well as retail stores. And we know that, you know, Route twenty um is not a owned by the town. And so any traffic mitigation, it it would be up to the state whether they wanted to do it or not. Um, and so with the by right of. Uh, I I I just wanna say right off the bat that I think this is a great idea, right? I just wanna. Make sure that we're aware of the unintended consequences that could happen here down the road. Right, where, you know, so you know, they decide that, you know, you know, now we're done and now we're gonna turn, you know. Turn this into a mixed use and somebody comes in and does a mixed use. And that where that driveway, it's always concerned me of where that driveway dumps out is that's a bad intersection to begin with. So from a traffic safety point of view and the fact that we know how the state doesn't like to do anything to Route twenty to mitigate traffic. Um, you know, that's a bit of a concern to me. But again, I I don't know how, what other way to do it, right? So um, you know, I just wanna make sure that that, you know, I think that's sort of Lisa's point is that. You know, we we've gotta really be careful here of, you know, what the what the consequences of this vote could be. That's all.
Well, I do also wanna just bring the point home that this is a lease, so it's not. Uh, it's currently town-owned, so i- if. Uh, it were to be sold, then town meeting would have to authorize that sale. So if at some point in the future. It's gonna be mixed use, then that's also something they would have to go through a permitting process.
Right.
So there they would, and there's also going to be a preservation restriction as Lisa pointed out. So I know the town administrator is working on that. And um it it is uh. Quite a time-consuming process, so I know one of the uh entities that she's talking to. Um, they want to write if they're gonna hold the preservation restriction, they write the preservation restriction. Um, so that's part of the uh challenge and the reason why the preservation restriction isn't ready yet. So they're gonna write in the preservation restriction, everything that has to be preserved.
Yep.
I think last I heard that the contract that's being written up is leased to buy. The possibility of purchasing, so. If they were purchasing it, we would wanna make sure they would have to go through a different process. And also, um. With the special permit, I think you could write on it that this application runs with the owner. So then if a new owner comes in, they have to start the whole process over again. Yeah, I mean, I think that's special permit and variance, I think you can set a time. One or the other, we haven't done one for so long, but I think there were some in the past that we made sure the applicant. And the application and all the conditions ran with that specific. Applicant and not with the land. Do you, do you know off the top of your head, Lori, is that a special permit that runs, that we can have a condition that runs with the applicant?
Well, the special permit would be for the residential use. I mean, I'm sorry, not residential, restaurant, the restaurant use. So if they were to go from a restaurant use to a different use. Then depending upon what that use is, they may or may not need a uh special permit. So if if the restaurant use is abandoned, then the special permit goes away. So they have two years to return uh the re- the restaurant use. Um, but if two years has lapsed, then it's gone. If they were interested in doing a restaurant again. Then they'd have to come back to the zoning board of appeals for another special permit. So I'm looking at the use chart. Um, so if they were gonna do like a vertical mixed-use development, so that means, you know, some sort of commercial use on the first floor. And residents on the upper floor, that would be a by right use. Um, if they were to do horizontal mixed use, that's prohibited, so that's not an option. Unless they went to the zoning board of appeals for a use variance, so they're they're kinda. Kinda limited by what they can do by the use table for the Business East.
Just looking through it too. They could do a retail store there, like Bill mentioned. So if it was a C V S or Walgreens. They could come through and do that by right. You wonder if we're gonna.
If they were gonna do a C V S, they can do a C V S right now. Um, you know, if the town didn't own the land because they have the frontage. So that would, that would be allowed today. I I can't imagine that C V S is gonna be want to go into the historic mansion. So I don't know how that would work. Like how they'd be able to outfit the historic mansion for that specific retail space. Um, because remember, there's gonna be a preservation restriction on the property. So if they were interested in keeping the historic mansion as something and then doing a C V S. Uh, over off of Route twenty, then they could now.
But that happened in New Hampshire. I know I said it before.
The town owns it, so that's not gonna happen.
Right, but if they sold it, like say that it was leased to buy and they bought it. But um Carter, I see your hand up and I see Lisa's, but she had her hand up first, so I'm just gonna call Lisa cuz she might be speaking to something that was just said. Lisa, can you state your name and address?
Um, Lisa Moselli, thirteen Maple Street. Imagine I'm still on, right? I'm not on mute. Okay.
Nope, you're not on mute.
Great. So uh, first question is. There were, it's two things that Lori had said. How long is this lease expected to be for?
I'm not all that familiar. I think it's ten years with the option to buy.
So it would be ten year, and if they didn't, if they didn't um. Use the option, would they still be able to lease it for a length of time after that?
I believe so. I have not seen the lease, so I. Probably shouldn't speak to it. It it would be better for you to reach out to Stephanie.
Okay, cuz I think, I mean, I think the general public should actually know what the lease states before it even comes to town meeting because they're gonna have to make a choice. And if it's at town meeting, they're not gonna have much of a choice, so that that detail is kind of important because we talk about. Leasing it, owning it, and then we talk about giving them a TIF, which I wouldn't, I don't understand how a TIF happens with a lease product, but. Those are, those are two things that I think are um worth bearing uh note.
But I know the warrant is open and it's gonna close on September twenty-second. So they might not have the specific language of the article yet, but certainly it would be on the warrant. Um, so.
The language of the lease?
So the, I imagine that the warrant article will specify. The length of time of the lease versus the option to buy.
And all the detail as well, then, if it's gonna do that, right?
Yeah, I I would imagine that not providing that information would be problematic for the vote. The the voters would want to know the specific of the length of the lease and what the option to buy consists of.
Yes, yeah, I I totally agree. And and what the TIF, the TIF that you're discussing might be as well. So, okay, all right. I hope I was helpful.
All right, thanks. Hi, all right, Carter, you have another question?
Yeah, um, I was just trying to think of like what other possible things. And I was wondering um if people are concerned about rezoning the parcel, if there was. Would be a way that you could like very narrowly like write a new use for the residential seat that would allow. Something like this that would be of minimal concern. I mean, if it's something like specific in the. The business district, people don't want, if there was a way to kind of write that would allow what they wanna do with the White Cliffs. In that district, but not any other business things.
How about an overlay like they did for Bigalos? Like it could be an overlay. It would just include certain things and it would be for White Cliffs.
I don't know how I could make that happen by the time the warrant closes in five days.
Well, I mean, I.
Careful of spot zoning as well.
I don't think an overlay is spot zoning, though. They they wrote one for Bigalos. You can put an overlay anywhere you want.
I also, I mean, I I know I was watching a little bit of the select board meeting and I think they kind of. Were open to reopening the warrant after if there was other things they wanted, so I don't know. I mean, cuz the town meeting's not gonna be until. November now, which I I don't know the exact timeline, but that does give a little bit more time.
November second.
I think it's November third.
Oh, November third. It's the Monday in the first week of November.
Um, third.
Yep, you're right, third.
Okay, I noticed Millie's hand was up next.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions about the preservation restriction. Basically, nothing can really happen until that is solidly in place. Is that correct?
No, well, like I said, I I know that Stephanie right now is working to find a um. Agency that will accept the preservation restriction. So that ought to be ironed out early on. Um, but the the specific agency that we met with, so um they had a tour. Of uh White Cliffs a couple of months, uh, sorry, a couple of weeks ago. And um afterwards, we were talking about. The intricacies of the preservation restriction and they said that they actually would not. Um, sign the preservation restriction until the work had been completed. So they, what they want to do is very early on, they would work with Elegant Banquets. To identify those features, so they would do a, an inventory of the features. That they are interested in preserving. So it'd be like a negotiation between Elegant Banquets, the town. And the preservation restriction holder. And then uh they go when the work is substantially complete. Then they do a photo inventory of all the elements that need to be preserved. So they want to see those elements in their. Um, best condition. And then they will do annual checks to ensure that um. None of those features are damaged in any way. So they were talking about specifically being interested in the exterior of the building, of course. The first floor and the second floor and the basement, uh, like for example, the um. Brick columns that are important for the structural integrity of the building. Um, but they said like the third floor. Hmm, that was the maid's quarters. Hmm. Um, and it really doesn't have uh any historic value. There's, there's nothing really all that special about that. So they said that they wouldn't have a problem with like redoing the plaster in that location. Uh, on the second floor and the first floor, they would have a problem with that. Um, so it's, it's all, um. Like I said, something to be worked out. And uh they would be an active part of the conversation throughout the process. And they they write the preservation restriction themselves, like I said.
And if it were to be leased, who would be responsible for maintaining the property?
Uh, that would be written into the lease, so that would be Elegant Banquets would be responsible for. So they would do the improvements and they would maintain the property and they would pay like the utilities and all that stuff.
All right, Anthony?
I think my biggest concern here is just the how old that building is and gonna be going under renovations. And things happen sometimes during renovations, especially to a very old building. And then if the building is no longer, you get more into uh Amy's point of uh a large retail operation could go in there. Um, and back to unintended consequences is what I concerned, what I'm concerned about. And I mean, I think I'm leaning more towards use variance at this point. I think it'd be a safer route.
I'm just, I'm just concerned that my var- my bor- zoning board of appeals would not grant these variants. Because the bar is very high, as you know, I mean, you folks had talked to the zoning board of appeals quite a bit about. The fact that you don't like them granting use variances. So um they've really tightened up on use variances. So um, you know, those are five individuals as opposed to. The two hundred some odd people who will attend town meeting. Um, I mean, chances are if town meeting says that they're not interested in the rezoning, then. Uh, Elegant Banquets will go away.
I think we should do the overlay. I think you, we could take the one, seven oh seven. And an overlay shouldn't take too long to do, and then we can pick that. You just want it to be like underneath right now, it's residential. And the overlay would allow the resident banquet, I mean, the restaurant and banquet hall, and it would take out. The retail use by right or the mixed use by right. I feel like an overlay would be a safety net. And so then, if they don't do the banquet and restaurant, then it goes back to being a resident. Residential.
I can't honestly say I'm a fan of doing overlays, because effectively what you're saying is that the zoning that exists or might exist is really not a consideration.
Well, it is. You, you still use the zone and they can do either one. So whatever is zoned right now is always zoned that way.
Right, you can do that. Oh, but, and by the way, you can do this.
Yep.
Yeah, it's, I can't, I myself, I'm, I'm not a huge fan of using that as a tool. But um, yeah, I'd, I'd certainly like to see this zoned as a, as something that doesn't need a special permit every time it gets into its um, re-renewals.
And you know, honestly, we've talked about this over a month ago. And this is the first time this is coming up. There is no way, no way, I've got two decisions that I have to write for zoning board of appeals by noon on Friday. There is no way I can do an overlay district in two and a half days and write two decisions. It's not possible. And then you folks won't have the opportunity to review it because the warrant closes on Monday.
Yeah, but like, like somebody said, it's now been bumped to November third. So like, say this board now today says we don't wanna push forward the years change. Then that's more of a disaster than not having an overlay. At least in my opinion. And, but I did see it happen in another state. There was a preservation restriction and the people bought it. They sat on it for ten years. The thing crumbled to the ground and they sold it to Dunkin' Donuts, because they said, okay, the preservation restriction can't be upheld, because there's no building left. But it was worth it to them, because they got a lot of money for it. And I'm not saying that I think these people would do it. But there's only twenty-five foot setback in Business East, and so now that whole neighborhood could have something within twenty-five feet of their homes. That isn't residential.
In nine years. So right now, there's gonna be a ten-year lease potentially. So in nine years, if that concern still exists, you can rezone the property.
Yep.
And it would be something other than Business East. And so if, if that was your concern at that time, you can visit it at that time. You can rezone the property next year. Um, right now, uh, the idea is to, to see if folks are in support of the restaurant use. So we have this banquet facility before us. This property has been vacant for twelve years, almost twelve years. And um, so this is the first, of course, there was the affordable housing use, which folks didn't support. And now there's uh, this use. So eh, people are not clamoring to redevelop White Cliffs. Uh, there, this may be the last option.
And maybe we make retail use as special permit in Business East. And then I don't wanna flip flop in a year, we rezone it, because then it's like spot zoning. Like if we say, okay, you're Business East now, but a year from now, we're gonna change you to something else. Like, I don't think we'll be able to go back to that one parcel that's now went from a split use to a full use and rezone it something else. Like I think whatever we do, we have to do it now. And I mean, we don't have to change it, retail use to special permit on the fall town meeting, but we should do it in the spring.
Well, maybe an alternative is to um, make large big box retail a special permit use. So right now, uh, the Business East District is largely retail. So do you really want to impact all of the businesses that we have in Business East and make them all go to uh, the zoning board of appeals or the planning board for a special permit, especially if they're just going into an existing space.
But Dunkin' Donuts wouldn't be a big box. It's a little box with a loudspeaker.
But that's a drive-through, which is a special permitted use.
Right. But they have some walk-in ones. Um, I see Carter, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I guess I, I was just wondering, I mean, if, if, if we want to go through with this article, even if we, we just wanna put it to town meeting, if, if we don't agree with it, um, could you know, if, if there's, you know, Lisa or other people in the area have like a different idea of how they'd want um, the zoning to, to go, could they do a citizen's petition and write their own overlay district um to present as a different option at the town meeting?
As long as it's submitted by Monday. And they would need to have, I think, at least ten uh, signatures from registered voters.
I mean, like, could be asked the select board to extend the, the closing to, you know, another couple of weeks or?
Well, you also have to keep in mind that they have statutory requirements that they have to meet. Like, for example, they have to post the warrant, um. I believe the warrant has to be posted at least fourteen days prior to the town meetings, um.
I, I mean, I guess my, just based on my understanding of the, the parts of the select board meeting I was watching, they seemed like they were, you know, there, some of the selectmen were a little concerned about um closing the, the warrant that early in case something else came up, and they, they seemed to be open that they might reopen it to allow something else if, if they did. So I, I guess I'm just kinda throwing that out there to anyone who's, who's on the call who wants to go a different direction if, if we can't do that.
Emmy, you're on mute.
Oh, I saw Anthony's hand is up.
So I guess the question I have is if we can't get the date extended um, by the select board, um, and we voted this down tonight. That basically is gonna say that the banquet hall, that's, the, the agreements being worked through, isn't gonna happen. Is that, do I have that correct? It won't go to town meeting. People won't vote on it.
Um, if, if this is uh, not put forward, then I don't know what's gonna happen, the rest of it. Uh, may fall apart.
I definitely want it, but I definitely do wanna protect the residents. I mean, my neighborhood would be like Western Estates, and they put in a golf course behind me. But they had in the decision, should the golf course um, not be a golf course anymore? Should it fail to exist as a golf course anymore? It has to revert back to residential. And that was part of the decision. But I don't know if it was a used variance or a special permit. Because someone did come in and they wanted to put in a big baseball field with huge lights and, and that would have had a huge impact on our neighborhood. So when I see how close Business East is gonna be to that neighborhood, I wanna make sure they're protected fifty years from now. Because I think it was over, probably seventy years later, that the baseball group came and wanted to use the golf course as as a big baseball facility. But because in the decision, it said that it had to revert back to residential, that protected our neighborhood. So now, anything that comes forth would have to be residential, but I think it still is zoned residential.
But remember, the special permit would only be for the restaurant use. So if the restaurant is not used for that purpose, the building is not used for that purpose, then the special permit goes away. So the special permit, um, so if, if this zoning goes in, then Elegant Banquets has, first of all, White Cliffs is owned by the town. So the town has, say, because they are the owner of the property. Secondly, they have to get a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. Third, they have to go through site plan approval. So if the uh, deal is the way I've been told, where it's a ten-year lease with the option to own, if you folks don't feel comfortable, then you could change the zoning at that time. So you could do an overlay. Even next year, you could do an overlay that says, okay, well, um, it's a restaurant use now. So we're gonna do an overlay that's specific for White Cliffs Mansion. We're gonna allow the restaurant use, and then we're gonna allow a couple of other uses. Then they wouldn't uh, have a problem with the rezoning, because they wouldn't be grandfathered, because they're still in allowed use. You see what I'm saying? But then the problematic, the problematic uses that you're concerned about would not be an option.
No, they don't go away, because we'd be zoned Business East underneath it. It wouldn't be residential underneath anymore. So we do an overlay, it would be an overlay on Business East. It wouldn't be an overlay on residential anymore.
Okay.
So that wouldn't work.
That's a good point. But if you wanted to rezone that, um.
Ah, you'd have to change retail.
I mean, I would not recommend taking out retail, because even, I mean, what if they had a, like a little gift shop? And um, uh, you're really tying your hands as to what you can do with the White Cliffs Mansion. So say, you know, in twenty years from now.
Permit. Like, I don't think take out retail, but retail by special permit. At least, and then the board could see. It's a big difference between CVS and a little gift shop, shop.
Well, I'm just, I'm just picturing. I mean, CVS is a drive-through. CVS is down the street, so I don't know why we would have two CVSs within, you know, half a mile of each other, number one.
It would be, a competitor would be Walgreens.
Okay, but right now, they can do that. They would want to be up by Route twenty, right? Because why would anybody wanna drive up a hill and put a, put a, a, a giant drugstore within a historic mansion, where you have to preserve the stained glass windows and the wood paneling? Like, I don't, I don't see how that would work. Right now, half of the property is already zoned Business East. So the portion of the property that's up against Route twenty, you could do that today. You could have done that for the last many, many years, and it wasn't done. So.
Again, it's not a guarantee they have to approve hardship, and that would be hard to do if they have frontage on Route twenty.
Well, hardship is only for variance.
Oh, I thought that's what we were talking about. I'm sorry.
Alright Carter, I see your hand is up, and then Bill.
Yeah, I guess I, I'm kinda seeing this as like, this is the best kind of option we have that we can present by November. Um, and if we decide we wanted to change any of the, the uses in Business East or even adjust to that district, you could, we could do, talk about that to do for the spring or next year. Um, because no matter what, it's still gonna be either the town owns it or the town's leasing the property, so nothing crazy is gonna happen with it in the next year. Um, and we can, so by the time we're, yeah, if we, again, and we can also, if we want to look at what the uses are anyways, or adjust them in, for more things, um, so it doesn't look like we're just moving one parcel back and forth between two zoning districts. Um, I think, I think going for this in November and then um, we can talk about adjusting some things for the future if we want to.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, thanks. Um, Bill?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sort of sorry I brought this up originally, but I wasn't expecting it to, to have this much conversation. I mean, it's good conversation. I think, you know, one of the things we have to keep in mind is that in twenty sixteen, this was purchased um, because of the fact that it was a function space. Right? Um, you know, I, I think the, the road we're going down now is the best road, because a-again, you know, to Lori's point, I don't see them being able to get a use variance um, for, for the way it's set up now. Um, but I, I do think, number one, it needs to be revisited, but I think, number two, in the town meeting, right, it needs to be stated. Everyone needs to be aware of the potential unintended consequences here, and then let the town decide. Right? That's the whole point of town meeting, is that the town decides, not us. Right? We make a recommendation. We say, you know, this is the best course of action. However, we need to understand what the consequences might be of this action, and then let the town vote. That's my two cents.
Yeah, um, Anthony?
Yeah, I guess I'm just mirroring uh, Bill and Carter that. Uh, not really fond of this, but I don't think we have a real choice other than to put this presented to town meeting and let the residents decide, and then revisit next year when we have time.
Hmm, I might write an overlay. Always. I really think I could write one by Friday if we had to do it, because I am concerned about the unintended consequences, because I just see what they did, tried to do to my neighborhood. So if there's nothing there, like it's a twenty-five foot setback between the houses and the building. And I definitely want this function hall to go in, and I definitely want them to be successful. I just do worry about the future. And maybe it's how they write the lease to own, maybe the lease to own has something in it that they can only be a function hall, or I don't know.
And so you're thinking, you're thinking you need to write an overlay in two days, and then we'd have to come back and vote on that?
And get that done? But I am gonna write one, just, I don't know, in case you need it for town meetings, like people do vote down.
So then would you propose that on the floor?
Yeah.
I, I don't think that would be legal. Um, you know, it's, it's one thing to change like the MBTA where there was a change to the size of the area that was included within the district, but the district was all written up. There was no change to the district language, and um, eh, you know, y- you can't just put out there in front of town meeting where there's nothing in writing an overlay district that specifies uses and parking requirements and um, you know, dimensional requirements um, on the fly. I, I'm sure town council would uh, kick that.
Could you have an amendment to the Business East? So say we're changing it to Business East. Say that people who are gonna vote no. Can you have an amendment to Business East that would say, okay, we're gonna have retail and vertical mixed use by special permit only? And if that was changed by special permit, if it saved the vote, can that happen?
Right now, we would have to submit for inclusion on the town meeting warrant an article that would change retail to mixed, uh, to a special permit use. It would be a separate article.
Mm-hmm, uh-huh.
And um, you know, we'd have to submit that by the close of the warrant on Monday. But I, I would be concerned about all of the little businesses that you're gonna impact with that. So every single business, every single retail space that is interested in occupying an existing storefront is gonna have to go to you for a special permit. And what are you even going to ask them? You know?
Be the CBA, but I worry about the hundred homes there that are gonna have the opened up to a commercial use between, within twenty-five feet of their homes.
But do you really have a? But do you really have a problem with having a retail establishment within the historic mansion? You know, what if, what if somebody wanted to um, sell paintings, you know, put a gallery space in there? It, it, would that really be a big problem? I think the issue is that you don't want big box retail with a drive through. Am I right? We can put a use in there. We can specify that if you're just doing regular retail, like say under um, two thousand square feet, you can do that by right. If you wanna do big box retail over two thousand square feet, that's a special permit. So we could ta- tackle it that way, just and everybody that's in the um Business East District would have to comply with that.
And we'd like ask to make it so that the zoning, make sure the zoning changes after the lease. Um, because I feel like if the lease fails, we would not want to do the zoning change.
That is a huge concern too, that I didn't
Or could we even make like in the article, it's like the zoning change is conditional on that lease going through. Is that something we're allowed to do?
Well, I think what we can do is, is if it doesn't go through, we can pull the warrant. Right? We can go up and say, you know, we no longer want this to move forward. You know, because the lease was denied, right? Any warrant can be pulled on the floor.
I am questioning, so what do you want the future to be White Cliffs, of White Cliffs to be? Do you want it? You want it to be demolished and via subdivision? Because the only thing that is allowed under the residential seed district is pretty much single family homes. So no millionaire is coming in there to uh, convert the White Cliffs Mansion into a single family home. Duplex is allowed by special permit. And then those are pretty much the options, so. Are you giving up on the mansion? You don't, you don't want it to exist?
I don't see us giving up on the mansion at all. I think everybody here agrees that they want this to go through and they want the function hall. But they don't want, at least in my opinion, I don't want uh, a mixed use twenty-five feet from the residential houses or retail. Should they go there? We can't guess. What will be there in fifty years? We can't guess then. But we know what's coming forward right now.
I, and I don't think we're trying to make those decisions for fifty years. I mean, at this point, we're, you know, maybe scoping out ten to fifteen. Things change so drastically that to say we're gonna set something in stone today that's gonna last for fifty years is probably a little bit um naive to think that.
But once we change zoning, it changes zoning. So we're saying that's, you know, and if they division and then freeze it for eight years.
Yeah, but think about it. I mean, this comprehensive zoning change went in place in two thousand and nine and you folks have changed zoning every single year since then. Every single year. So
Why we do this?
And retail and residence exist together all over the town. There are many, many examples right in the downtown where you have residential and retail right next to each other. Uh, just look on um, South Street.
We've also had many, many in town, which is what makes me concerned. We've had many on Business West that they did not get along and the neighbors were really upset. So we've probably had more that don't um, get along than we do that do get along.
I have not heard that. What I have heard is I've heard complaints about contractor yards. But I haven't heard a single complaint in the three and a half years that I've been here wh- where somebody uh complained about CVS or any of the retail spaces. I can't think of a one.
I've heard more complaints about vacant and empty and underutilized buildings. Oh, you're muted, Amy, somehow. Still?
No, I think your microphone itself is muted instead of Zoom.
I mean, do we wanna take a straw poll or anything to see where we're at on this?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
I just plugged in a microphone because my computer was like vibrating.
Yeah, I know, I mean.
And leave this open to our next meeting. We don't have to close the hearing tonight.
Think we do because the warrants due for Monday.
I think we do.
I, I asked Lori earlier and she said we didn't, but.
So I, I need the final language for the warrant. So um, uh, certainly you can keep the public hearing open, you know, as far as the recommendation is concerned. So you don't have to have your recommendation. But if you want to change the language or add an additional article like I had mentioned, you know, maybe um, special permit retail uses over two thousand or twenty-five hundred square feet. Then I need to know that today. Um, and actually we don't have enough time to hold a public hearing on that one. So I would have to advertise for three weeks. And then we have to submit that article. The public hearing has to be held two weeks before town meeting, so let's see. So that would put us into October twentieth, so. Uh, let's see. If you tell me you want an article and yet another article right now, then I could probably advertise it in the Telegram and Gazette for Tuesday. And then we could hold that public hearing on the seventh. But I'd have to already submit it for inclusion on the warrant. So.
I think, in the, in my opinion, I think we should if it's gonna make us feel better and then it would make the town feel better. Like, if we're questioning it, I think people also might question it on um, town meeting floor. And we could pass over it at town meeting too.
I'm not sure that I'd want to do something that's too dramatically changing what's allowed in the, the business district. I feel like that would look a little bit more that we're kinda making extreme weird steps and get the town a little suspicious more than um, feeling like we're we're trying to protect something. Um, I think, I think the better course of action would kind of be to either go forward with this or if, if you had like in, you know, some other option that we had time to write um, to present in addition to this, but um I think going through with this and then if we wanna revisit it for the spring or another town meeting. That'd be good and kinda try to have the understanding that we're doing some, gonna start doing some revisiting it in the future. So we're all on the same page so we can go to the town in agreement.
I do see a couple of hands up in the audience. Do you mind if I take their concerns and then we can circle back?
No.
And we'll think about that. All right, I see Jacob Jones. Can you just state your name and address?
Hi, uh, Chair Porcy, this is Jake Pareski. This is Jacob Jones, one oh six Green Street. Can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, um, thanks for uh letting me comment. Um couple of my thoughts, one is I, um, um, I think member uh Brandon had a good idea of altering the order. Just from my perspective, that seems like something that could be done. Um, I can ask the select board if they'll be willing to do that. I don't see that being an issue. Um, I think this one's a two-thirds vote, isn't it, Lori? For the zoning? Yeah, um, so I mean, just to the point of I'm sorry, uh, doing the lease first and then this, which is I think what Mr. Brennan was suggesting. In other words, um, the the thought I heard was potentially not wanting to um, change the zoning for the parcel if the lease wasn't supported. Um, so as far as order of operations, I don't see any real issue with that from my perspective. Um, but as far as the concerns about what's gonna be done in the future, uh, the assumption being that the lease is supported. Then they're gonna be doing the use that the town agrees to for the first ten years at least, after which they could potentially purchase it. But after that, um, it's still a subject to the his- the building itself is still up, subject to the historic restriction that will be uh finalized and recorded and that'll be forever. So, um I don't see how a lot of the really drastic scenarios could feasibly happen. Then on the other side of it, I say, well, what's our other option? Um, I think to, I think about it being partly the town's fault that the pre-existing non-conforming use got lost. Um, the, the rest, the, the, the use that was there before was a non-conforming use in that zoning. But it was okay because that zoning was done and I think Business East was created in two thousand and seven or ish, something like that. So, but it was a pre-existing non-conforming use, which would have been fine, except the town bought it and then ended the use. And then pre-existing non-conforming use goes away over a period of non-use. So we're kind of at fault for losing that use. So how can we ever get that use back? I, if the other option is a um is a use variance, I mean, I sat on the ZBA, I know the standard for use variance and just as a layperson looking at the facts here, I don't think it qualifies for a use variance. And I think if the ZBA granted one, maybe someone could challenge it. I think the cleanest way is to do what's been proposed here. Um and when you go look and see when the Business East for this was made, it follows along all the parcel lines within a certain distance from the highway until it gets to this lot, which is a unique lot, because it kind of goes away quite a bit. And then it doesn't go around that parcel line, it just cuts it in half. It didn't make a whole lot of sense. And I think this is the opportunity to fix it. Thanks, I probably went longer than three minutes. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, Madam Chair. And uh, other than that, I'll shut up.
That's okay. We don't have a timer here.
Okay.
I guess the other thing we were talking about earlier was an overlay, but it's too late to do an overlay. But it would, an overlay would have just been that one use on that property. And you might know more than we do. But, so you think the lease could be done before town meeting?
No, I'm sorry. I just meant in the order of warrant articles. I thi- I thought that's what Mr. Brennan was saying.
Okay, so the lease will be on the town meeting floor.
Yeah, so the idea, just so you know, of what's contemplated right now is that uh, the lease itself, the authorization, the town authorizing to enter the lease, including kind of a subpiece of that is including the option to buy um, that is currently contemplated. Um, secondly, there, we are discussing, again, none of this is final, but the um the discussion would be um, a tax, um, a little bit of tax, uh, property tax consideration for some amount of time. I don't wanna get into too much details. I could tell you what the current status is. But it's not the final status, but the first status has to do with the first five years. Um, uh, of consideration on the property tax. And then, so that's the second warrant article. And then the third warrant article, uh, th- that's in our minds is the zoning change. And so the zoning change certainly my opinion would be, could easily be the third one. So you, you know, if the lease doesn't get passed, then you know, uh, to Mr. Brennan's point, you could there may be much less support in doing the zoning change if there's no, if this, this particular lease isn't entered.
Right, we just pass over. Um, I have a quick question. With the lease to buy in ten years, say that the person, although I don't think they are, I'm not saying they are, I think they're gonna be amazing, but say they weren't. Could the town say, you know what, hasn't been working out, we don't wanna sell it to you? Or if it's in the agreement, do we have to sell it to them no matter what?
So, so all I can speak to is what the draft language is. Of course, the town would get to vote on the final, but the, the draft language, which I think has been agreed to in principle by both sides, um, contemplates that it would be it, it, they would have the right to exercise an um uh, the option to purchase, but the terms and price of that agreement would be subject to good faith negotiation. It would take into account fair market value. It would take into account the use. It would take into account uh, and I don't have the lea- uh, the draft lease in front of me, but um uh, and, and the, the price would in, in any case have to be um, greater than the amount of money the town has put into it, specifically referring to the CPA money. Um but as a practical matter, thinking ten years into the future, I, I would have a really hard time believing that, that mutually negotiated terms, um, ten years from now would be um, anywhere less than what we paid for. But anyway, to your other point of like, could we just say, no, we won't sell it to you? Well, the sales price would have to be mutually negotiated. Um, so
Does it have to go in front of town meeting too? Does town meeting have to approve the sale?
I, I'm, I'm ninety-five percent certain that that's what the language currently says.
Okay, but we'll know that
Subject of verification, yeah, don't trust, that, let's all verify that, but like, that's what the current language says and let's make sure that's in there, but um, that's a great question.
Okay, thank you.
As I, I think there was also some, there was some concerns raised as far as my recollection was that, to make sure that the um public procurement and disposition of property law is always obviously followed. Um, in our view, in my personal view, this was done by an RFP process, which included lease or sale. And at least in my little brain, it sounded like it would make sense to include an option to buy with the lease, because that's a lease and a sale, kind of in the same document, but uh, we're kind of deferring a little bit to legal counsel to make sure we're complying with Massachusetts law on that. But um, I do recall it mentioning that it would be subject to town approval.
Okay, thank you.
And then in the event it didn't, then it would, yeah, they'd go on leasing it presumably and yeah.
And, okay, well, thank you.
I, I'll be around if you have any other questions. Again, I'm, I'm not speaking for the board. I'm just one person watching your meeting, but uh, happy to help any way I can.
Okay, thanks. Carter, I see your hand is up, but there was someone named PT in the audience who's had their name up. Do you mind if I ask them to talk?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, and I'll come back to you. Hi, oh.
Hi, hi, Amy.
Hi.
Yep, how you doing? Sorry, this is uh, Paul Tagley Ferry. Uh, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep, I, I didn't realize my thing showed up as PT, but I guess that makes sense. Uh, so yeah, uh, Paul Tagley Ferry, thirty-two Hemlock Drive. Uh, so I'm currently the chair of the zoning board of appeals. Um, I'll save my opinions about this project for a different time, but I saw that there were some questions with regards to sort of variants and special permits and sort of how the ZBA looks at those two. Um, so with the variance, just for, you know, some high level sort of information, right? When we have a use variance in front of us, right? And whether or not we grant a use variance or not for a specific lot, right? We don't really have from a board's perspective, a lot of controls around the conditions that we can put on a use variance. Because what we're essentially saying as a board is hey, this use isn't allowed in this, on this piece of property or in this part of town, right? And we're saying, no, it's fine and we can bypass the bylaws. And so we don't have sort of some of the conditions that I think you guys have been discussing at a very high level and generic level. Um, versus say a special permit, right? Whereas a special permit criteria, you can put in restrictions on sort of the hours of operations, a number of cars in a certain, you know, parking lot, who's the current owner, right? So you can limit ownership structure in terms of like hey, uh, so- someone's coming in front of us for a special permit to, uh, for a specific use. We can say, okay, well, you can do this based on your project, but if But if you ever sell the business or the changes ownership hands and stuff like that, then the special permit sort of ceases to exist at that point. And there's a lot more flexibility just from a high level, right, that the ZBA has with regards to special permits and some of the conditions and criteria that we can look at. Um, and that goes for both special permits and obviously site plan review, which you guys are very familiar with. But I just wanted to clarify that. I, I saw that there was a couple of questions on, you know, variances and special permits, but you know, happy to answer the questions if you guys had, kind of driving right now, so cell service is a little shaky.
All right, well, thanks, thanks for your input.
You got it.
Okay, Carter, back to you.
Um, I was just wondering with the um, the preservation restrictions, is there anything about preserving the land at all, um, or any restrictions on the land? I remember from some of the previous um, proposals, there was an issue that people wanted more of, more protection of the land as opposed to just the building. Um, and I think that if there was any even kind of loose restrictions on the land, that that would probably ease any concern with the potential redevelopment of the property under new zoning.
Discussed uh, with the agency that is considering uh, taking the preservation restriction. And they said that they ex- uh, they uh, would put a preservation restriction on certain historic features of the land, like for example, uh, there has been talk about um like stone walls, historic stone walls that related to the time when uh, the Wesson family owned the mansion. If those were to exist, then they could be included within the preservation restriction. But just the land itself, um, like I, I know Elegant Banquets was interested in doing extensive gardens. Um, those gardens would not be protected because those would not be historic in nature. So it would only be historic features that would be called out.
Do you happen to know if there's any trees or any of those, uh, you know, types of um, plantings that might be under that?
I know that there is a tree, um, that was submitted to the state for legacy status.
Okay.
I don't believe that they've received that designation as of yet.
Okay.
Um, but it, actually, Tom Riordan is raising his hands, he can probably speak to the status, I, I believe he was on the committee who submitted that.
Great.
Okay, um, yep.
Tom Riordan, Seven Sunset Drive. There is a birch, a large birch tree on the south side of the mansion. It was planted by the Wesson, it was provided for by a nursery in West Westboro, and they have documentation of that. So the, they have submitted information to get a status as a legacy tree. So if the historic preservation was going to consider anything, I would think they would consider that birch tree.
Thank you.
Before I forget, I also want to read in Norm's email, because I promised I would, and it was submitted to us this afternoon. Uh, so for the public record, I wanted to read in his email. Norm Corbin wrote, "The White Cliffs property has been used as an event restaurant venue from nineteen forty-two to two thousand fourteen, a total of seventy-two years. Prior to this use, it was a private residence from the late eighteen eighties to nineteen forty-two, for a total of fifty years. From a historical perspective, converting the property to a hundred percent Business East makes sense as this has been the primary use of the property. Norm Corbin, thirty-five Whitney Street."
Okay.
I see another hand up. Um, Jacob Jones?
Jacob Jones, one oh six Green Street. Really quickly on the tree question, um, I was at a meeting um, at the property within the last couple of weeks with Elegant Banquets, with Historic New England, with Stephanie, with lots and, lo- lots of folks were there for the purpose of coordinating these kinds of questions. And I remember specifically the tree, the birch tree that um, Mr. Riordan pointed out was uh, flagged. And uh, all I heard at that meeting from all parties was a great amount of enthusiasm about that tree has to stay.
Okay.
That specific tree has to stay. So that was from the owner of Elegant Banquets's mouth that I heard that. Of course, we can make, you know, make sure we take steps to be diligent about that, but um, on the other hand, on the backside of the property, I did remember seeing one maybe older specimen, but that is probably in the footprint of where they're envisioning the ballroom expansion may go. And so that one didn't, no one mentioned, no one who was there, and there were a lot of, you know, very much smarter than me folks who were there mens- you know, referring to historic significance, and no one mentioned historic significance for that tree, even though it did look like an older tree. Um, but it looked like just logistically that one maybe was going to need to go. Incidentally, to uh, uh, member Brennan's question, I also just asked, like, hey, from, you know, the front of the building, or you could say where that tree is down to the road, is there any intention of any structures really going on from there down to the road, from this potential tenant, um, Elegant Banquet? So they said, they don't see any reason why they would need to, other than, you know, fixing, you know, making the road better, or, you know, minor improvements like that and making landscaping improvements. Um, no structure. The only other structure that had mentioned, um, which will be described in more detail is a small ceremonial, small is I guess relative, about a twenty-five hundred square foot, uh, single-floory ceremonial building. Um, for those who may want to do ceremonies indoors, um, that could also potentially be a meeting space made available more frequently to the town. But that would be on the backside of the property. Is what we were told.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Okay. Does anybody else have any more questions, comments? Oh, I see a hand up, Brian Z. Can you please, oops, this is jump around when I unmute.
Uh, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, Brian Zeiger, two Stratton Way. I'm actually uh, in a butter, so I do appreciate a couple of you that seem to have concern for the butters, and I'm a little disappointed that a couple of you did not. So I just wanted to bring that up, and we're gonna be involved in every step of the way. And I'm really not thrilled that you want to change the zoning process. I'm speaking behalf of uh, some of the butters here. So just want that to be known. And I will see you Friday, and we'll talk to the uh, Elegant Banquets as well. But we're not thrilled about this. I just went, we just wanted you guys to know that, and I do appreciate a couple of you speaking on our behalf, so, thank you.
Okay, um, I saw Tom Riordan's hand up first, Carter, do you mind? So I'm gonna call him Tom and then we'll circle back to Carter.
Sorry, Tom Riordan, Seven Sunset Drive. I misspoke, it's not a birch tree, it's a beech tree. More importantly, the, the whole purpose of this exercise is to preserve the mansion. And returning it to a uh, an event function would be great. And changing the zoning seems the most elegant way of satisfying one of the criteria for preserving the mansion. And as Lori said, this may be our last best chance of doing that. And uh, speaking with the developer, they said ninety-seven percent of their business is weddings. And they're anticipating spending up to two hun- twenty million dollars on this project. And with the town continuing to own the land for the least ten years of the lease, I don't see any major concern about changing the zoning and allowing other kinds of businesses in the back portion of the site. I think it changing the zoning is telling the developer, yes, we are on board with this, we support it, we want to see it. So I see that as a major vote of confidence for this developer, and I certainly would su- support the zoning change.
I just want to double check my number, you said two hundred and twenty million?
Two, twenty, twenty million.
Oh, twenty million.
Restoration and new construction.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Carter?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm just um, noticing some people who, you know, are butters and other people nearby, and um, I'm just wondering if they have like other ideas of how, what they would prefer the next course of action to be with this is. I mean, I think we've kind of rolled out that we don't, we are not very confident that a use variance would go through, but if they had other ideas rather than rezoning this to business, if they had any other suggestions that they'd be more comfortable with.
I mean, I I guess I, myself, I just sort of feel like we have the, the opportunity to you know, follow through with, with preserving the mansion, which was the intent and was voted on at, in two thousand sixteen. And hopefully putting in a very specific and unique business that was there before. That's the ideal situation, and it's taken us ten years to get here. In the meantime, the mansion has fallen into various states of disrepair. It's been a non-revenue generating and really hasn't been a benefit to the town or anybody, so my feeling is that, you know, not out of any disconcern, out of what the zoning could bring to the residents that are butters. Um, but hearing what also the town wants to hear, but also not having the entire mansion basically just be neglected and underutilized and follow through with another ten years of this.
Okay, did board members, anybody else have any comments? My concern, I wish we had a little more time, because I think the overlay is the best choice. I don't want to lose the lease or the butters, so I would, if it does go to Business East, I would like to protect them a little more by, you know, vertical mixed use by special permit. Maybe retail store by special permit of, over a certain size, we could do it for the spring town meeting, but I just I just worry about the future, but it can change in the future again, so. That's my opinion.
Ideally, the residents of Northborough will decide.
Okay. All right, so it looks like we have no more hands up. And we have to decide what we want to do for Lori to give to the select board on Monday. Are we just gonna bring it forth as written? Or do we want to add anything? Or I just want to see if anyone else's opinion, or you just want to bring forth what we have to town meeting and see how that goes.
I, I'm comfortable with that at this point.
Yeah, so am I. I think it's the best option we have for now, and then, you know, we take some time and we really think about what we want to do in that district overall. I would hate to make a rash decision now, um, changing something really quick, just you know, and then make a mis- you know, and then realize later, oh, we made a mistake in even doing that.
Right, talk about unintended consequences.
Right, exactly. We've got something in front of us, let's, you know, all, all moves, move forward, and then, you know, and then we can, you know, reevaluate uh, for spring. Because nothing's gonna happen between now and spring.
Right.
Yeah, I, I don't really see anything that would make sense to change about the, the wording of it for November. And yeah, as Taylor said, nothing's, um, even if this gets voted down and everything gets voted down in a completely different idea comes up, it would have to at least be until April before anything goes through with it.
Okay. So, do you want to leave the warrant open? I mean, we can leave our public open hearing, uh, we can leave our public hearing open until town meeting, we've done that before, so if there are any amendments we want to make, we can, or do you want to just close the public hearing and take a vote? What is the feeling?
I'm okay with leaving it open.
Oh my.
I mean, that might help us, again, be more prepared if there's things that come in to revisit in the spring.
Oh, but I think, doesn't Lori need our vote in order to get the warrant closed?
We can
I don't, um, so you can keep the uh, public hearing open. Just realize that what is going to be printed in the warrant is the language that I'm gonna submit. So you already saw that language. It was the, in the uh, letter that I sent to the town administrator, so if you're okay with that language, I'll submit that again. If you want me to change the language, then now is the time to tell me to do that.
Okay, do you? Do you need the exact, um, because I mean, things can get amended on the floor, is it, do you need the exact language or just need the scope of the article?
So I, i- you can change a word here and there, but it can't significantly modify the intent of the article. So like, for example, you know, here, we're talking about rezoning the area for Business East. I couldn't then um, zone it for industry. Because that would have to be subject to a public hearing, and there'd have to be notification. So that would be too drastic of a change. But if it were, um, so say it was an article to talk about um, the number of parking spaces for a restaurant use. And so in the warrant article, it said four parking spaces. Um, for uh, per table, I'm, I'm sorry, one parking spa- uh, space per four seats. And then they wanted to change it to one parking space per five seats. That would not be a significant change, so that could happen on the town meeting floor.
Okay. And the person who wants to lease it, wants to get this done this fall, that's the intention, is that what they said?
So it'll take eighteen months for them to essentially uh, complete construction. So they want to file for their permits. So like I said, they are gonna need uh, special permits, and they're gonna need site plan review. So they have been doing some conceptual designs. Um, but should this get approved at town meeting, then they're gonna go full bore with the design. So of course, uh, you know, there was ninety-three thousand appropriated for CPA money uh, to figure out how to remove the additions, so uh, no progress has been made on that because of the fact that we don't know if this is gonna go through. Um, and of course, you know, they would have their, an architect that they would want to work with, so that's all up in the air. So once the town meeting vote happens, they can go full bore ahead with all of these issues, uh, working on the preservation restriction and all of that. Um, but they did say that they hope to be open, I believe, in the spring of twenty-seven.
Okay. All right, so it sounds like the majority would like to leave it the way it is for now, not to confuse things, but we're gonna leave the public hearing open. So what it is, is the wording as it is now will go forward. And any changes between now and town meeting would have to be an amendment on town floor within the scope.
So do you want to pick the uh, date and time for um, the public hearing to be continued to?
Sure, um, do we have anything on the agenda for our next meeting on October seventh?
Nothing yet.
Yeah, although I thi- I assume we're probably gonna keep talking about our bylaws for the spring, so I would make a motion that we um, continue this public hearing for October seventh at six o'clock. I would make a motion that we um continue this public hearing for October seventh at six o'clock.
I moved.
Like it.
Okay, roll call vote. Millie Milton?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Carter Brannon?
Aye.
Bill Pierce?
Aye.
And I'm an I. Okay. Onto the next thing on our agenda. It is. Discuss the potential zoning bylaws amendments for annual town meeting. I'm wondering Lori, the next one, select representative for engineering consultant selection committee, is that going to be quick? Like, should we just?
Yeah, a little bit of background. Background information on that. Vinnie Bignali is retiring. Um, so he is uh gonna be done as of uh December thirty-first, unfortunately. Uh, he's a big loss and of course, he's been handling uh the stormwater reviews since Fred retired. Um, so I talked to you folks a couple of years ago. Uh, some of you may have, well, definitely Carter, you're, you are new since that conversation. But a couple of years ago, I had talked to you folks about hiring an engineering consultant. Uh, to take over uh reviews of large projects and the inspections of large projects. Um. So now that Vinnie's retiring, it is unlikely that whoever falls follows in his shoes. Is going to be a civil engineer like Vinnie is. Um, so now we have a greater need for this engineering consultant to. Work with the Conservation Commission, the ZBA and the Planning Board. Um, so a couple of years ago, I had talked to you about uh creating a selection committee. Uh, where all three uh boards would be represented. So one member of the Planet Board, one member of the Congcom. One member of the ZBA uh to review uh the proposals that we receive. And to um interview the candidates and make a recommendation for who you would like to. Select as the consultants. So I uh first of all, I'm gonna double check and see that you folks are are still on board. Um, with that way of going about it. Um. And then if you are on board with it, if you folks would elect somebody to serve on the selection committee.
Sure. Um, if they hired as engineer though, like Vinnie, then we probably wouldn't need it. But this is just in case.
Yeah, yeah, it, like I said, it's very unlikely. I was very surprised when Vinnie took the job to begin with because it was uh uh civil engineers make a lot more money than conservation agents do. Um, so maybe there'd be a miracle and we'll find another uh person who's looking to either. Very, very early stages of their career or the end of their career where money isn't an object. Then um we might be lucky, but unlikely for that to happen. And then also we have um some larger projects coming down the pike. Most notably, the uh eighth lot common driveway. Um, that is starting construction right now. And so I'd like to have somebody uh on board to do the inspections of that common driveway. Uh, there was another common driveway that's uh kind of wrapping up at this point on West Street. Uh, that was uh four, four lots. And we ended up issuing an RFP and hiring an engineering firm just to do that one project. So they've been doing the inspections. So regardless of what happens with the Conservation Commission. It would be great to have a consulting engineer. Um, so I would like to have a firm that would have like a traffic engineer. So if we had a large project where they submitted a traffic study. Then the traffic engineer would review the study and ask questions and, you know, look at the plans and make sure that we're covered.
Have, have you worked with other firms uh in your other position?
Absolutely.
I thought you might, yeah.
Yes, and there are some that I would stay away from and others that I would recommend.
Okay.
So there is.
If they, if they respond to the part, yeah.
Yeah, so there, there are a couple of firms I'm specifically interested in targeting. Um, because I've had really good experiences with them. So I would send them the RFP and say, please, please submit.
Consider, yes, okay.
You're unmuted again, Amy.
All right. I was just saying, if there was anyone on the board that would be interested in being on that subcommittee.
Uh, sorry.
Um. I mean, I'd do it if nobody else wants to do it, but.
I was just gonna say the same thing. If there's no one else, I I can do it, but.
So maybe Bill and I can be on it and then whoever can do it. I don't know. Is it meeting? Do they meet during the day or?
It's up to you guys. I mean, we could um. Meet during the day or in the evening. It it would be good to have an odd number. Uh, because of course, you know, we don't want to have a two. Two-to-two vote. Uh, that's a problem.
So it'd be somebody from our committee, someone from the ZBA?
Yeah, and somebody from conservation.
So that's three. I mean, Bill and I could be like alternates, like I could do it if you want me to, Bill, and you could be the alternate if I can't make it or vice versa.
But who do we have on conservation? Don't we already have somebody on it?
So Vinnie does all of the engineering work for conservation. So he's looking at all the stormwater. Reports, he's looking at the perk tests and uh. You said, remember the Conservation Commission issues the stormwater management permit?
Right, but don't we already have somebody from the planning board on that?
No.
We don't, okay.
But this is just a representative for a new committee, right, to help pick an engineering consultant?
Yeah, so the only thing that you folks will be doing. Uh, who's on the selection committee is you're gonna be reviewing all of the proposals. So there could be three proposals, there could be ten proposals. And you're gonna be filling out a report card. Uh, so there's like basic criteria and then there's qualitative, like comparative criteria. So you're gonna be ranking all of the proposals based on the criteria. And then you're gonna pick like your top two or three that you want to interview. And then uh you're gonna meet at that time. And interview the people and then you're gonna rank them again. And then your uh of course staff, so I'm sure that's me. Will be checking all the references uh of the top people only. Um, and reporting back. So there'll probably be. Maybe. Two. Two to three meetings. Um, and they could be by Zoom if that's easier. Um, or they could be in person. It could be a hi- uh, you know, a hybrid. Uh, where, you know, a couple of them are uh by Zoom and one is in person if you want to meet the. Engineers in person. So. The whole commitment will start and finish probably within like two weeks. So it's two weeks of work and then maybe three weeks and then you're done.
When do you expect this to occur?
Soon. So I'm just putting the finishing touches on the RFP. Uh, then I have to send it to Stephanie. Uh, she wanted to double check the. Um. Uh, we require them to have insurance. So she wanted to double check the insurance amounts. Then we'll release it. Uh, we'll give three weeks from the date of release for the engineers to respond with their proposals. So I would really like to have an engineer on board by, say, November fifteenth.
No, since Vinnie isn't gone, could he help with the interview process? He's an engineer. Like you and Vinnie.
You know, like I would be happy to. I I know what I've done in the past is um. You know, I've helped review proposals and then I've given my opinion and, you know, I'm sure Vinnie would be. Willing to give his opinion. So. When you guys meet, we can say, oh, you know, I've had experience with that engineering firm. I think they're great. Or, you know, I've had this negative experience. So I, you know, I I wouldn't hire them. So uh I'm sure Vinnie and I would be happy to to give you our thoughts. And then you can take our thoughts for what they're worth.
Yeah, Amy, I I'm familiar with that project. We do that at the N, you know, we do have to do the same thing at the NBTA. So I can take it.
Okay. Cause I'm pressed, no. Yeah, I'm not gonna be able to do it within the next two months.
Yeah.
Either. So that would be great if you could do it.
Yep.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
I, I was trying to see if there's any way, but I just did not feel that that.
Right.
Some good time, two weeks at that time was gonna be. Doable, fairly doable.
Right. Okay. All right, thank you. So. I don't think we have to vote on that, right? No.
Nope.
Next on the agenda would be to discuss the potential zoning bylaws for annual town meeting in April. And I submitted some and. Bill and Carter. So, I mean, I was gonna do in the order that they were received, but that was me first. So I hate to be bossy. So if if Carter or Bill wanted to go first, that is fine too.
It's, it's your prerogative, Miss Madam Chairwoman.
I was only doing it by order of receipt just because then it makes it seem fair. Okay, so. I'm going to pull up the first couple of mine are really just housekeeping that were brought up at Design Review.
Mm hmm.
So I'm going to share it. Let's see. Okay. This went out to everybody. Okay, so I'd mentioned at our last meeting that um at Design Review, Mark McMenamy. One of the members was putting together a chart for parking. And um he found some. Simple things to be fixed um as part of this process. Seven oh nine oh three oh has to do with parking. So um. The first couple are such small items that Lori mentioned that we can probably do it as a clump. As a housekeeping item. The first one is just theater was spelt wrong. It's like an old time theater. So that's the first one. And then bowling alley. It's actually a lane. And someone else actually emailed me and confirmed that. So those first two, if nobody has any concerns with changing theater to theater. And the alley to lane, those would be housekeeping.
I, I would, I I I would say just, I I would prefer to keep the RE and instead, you know, have it consistently RE instead of ER, but. You know, I I might be in the minority opinion there.
I think either one are acceptable for sure.
I guess I'd have to look up the difference between the two. I think he said that was. The for, the bylaws are written in nineteen fifty-five. I don't know when that was written. But we don't have to vote, vote on it tonight. I'll just go down them. Uh, the next group was, there's, it points to birth. Now, if you look up birth in the dictionary, we have no definition for birth, but a birth has to do with a ship. And that's what all the definitions say. So when we don't have a definition, you're supposed to go to the. The Merriam, I forgot the second part of that name for the dictionary. And but this has to do with a ship. And so he was going through and he was trying to change all the bylaws, whether it was a loading dock, loading bay. And that got to be a lot. So he thought the easiest way to change it would be to have a definition for birth. Um, birth right here is a loading dock, a loading area such as a service door, bay or a dock. In that way, I mean, we're not on any waterways, so.
Got it.
He was just adding a definition. And then not changing these two highlighted words. And then in seven oh nine oh three oh C two B. Um, driveway shall be located within five feet of a building. Loading docks are exempt from this requirement. That was an addition he had. We had talked about it. At Design Review. I can't remember why. Do you remember why, Lori? But I guess I'd have to read it again, except for parking within an enclosed structure. No parking shall be located within eight feet of a building. No access aisle entrance or exit driveway shall be located within five way of a building. Loading docks are exempt from this requirement. Oh, it's because loading docks actually back right up to the building. So they don't have to be five feet away. That's what he was adding. Oh, it sounds like. It was supposed to be birth and he changed it to loading dock. Because the service door bay or dock, he was making sure that was a loading dock or exempt from this requirement.
Well, but it looks like he said change to birth.
Yeah.
So I would be, you know, d- does that mean a service door as well?
Let me just look up what the bylaw is right now. I'm gonna go to seven oh nine oh three oh.
Yeah, because he's basically trying to be consistent. Now that we put a definition for birth, he's using birth instead of loading docks.
Right, and using it everywhere.
Sure, yeah. Makes sense.
Okay, this, I guess because this whole thing was underlined, I was thinking this whole sentence. Wasn't an addition. But maybe he's just changing loading docks. We talked about it months, a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
I just want to see if that underline is there. Oh, three oh C two B. Oh yeah, it says loading docks are exempt from this requirement already. So it doesn't need to be underlined and he's just changing loading docks first. Okay. The next one has to do with mixed use parking. Um, we had a discussion and Lori, Bob and Mark and I. The way Mark read the current seven oh nine oh three oh B two D two. Um, he felt the way he read it. Was that. You could reduce the total amount of parking by twenty-five percent each time five thousand square feet were added. Where he thought that the intent of the bylaw was. For the total, the total for each additional five thousand square feet of floor area, additional space requirements. May re- reduce by twenty-five percent, not the whole building. It was a discussion between um Lori, Mark and Bob. And um I think Bob has reviewed it. That's what. We had left it at Lori, that you and Bob, we're gonna review it and see if you agreed that it made more sense this way. I'm not sure. Bob didn't weigh in on this one, I don't think, yet.
Yeah, we, Bob and I haven't discussed it, but I I'm fine with his proposed language.
Okay. So do you mind? We can run it by Bob just to make sure he's fine too. Cause Bob really, he didn't, Bob said he didn't care as long as everybody was on the same page. And understood it. He wanted to make sure everybody, and if Lori agrees with Mark. And if the board agrees with. The change, um, and then we should be all set. The next one. Had to do with valet parking. It was brought up that there isn't a lot of parking downtown and some places have valet parking, like. I went to a little restaurant downtown Shrewsbury. And they have parking behind the building, but they also have a valet. So if it's. All the parking spaces are taken up, the attendant. Um, will park your car and. Um will park your car. And someone mentioned, oh, you guys don't have valet parking in Northborough, so. I brought forth midway to Lori for review. And then Lori replied in an email that went to everybody. And said that she gave valet some thought. In that she thought. Um. Seven oh nine oh three oh B. Five E already provides the flexibility to allow valet parking. Um I'll pull up, this is the language right here. So. I don't have to read it out loud, but I could. The only reason why I highlighted this. Was. I mean, if you're gonna do valet parking, I mean. You probably wouldn't record it with the deed, would you, Lori?
Um I'm sorry, whoa. I wouldn't record it with the property deed.
Yeah, or would you? That's what I guess I was. I was comparing to what other towns have done for va- for valet parking.
What I would, I would do is I would put it as a condition of approval, so I would. So especially like, for example, if you're doing a restaurant with alcohol. Then that's a special permit. So in the special permit, I would detail everything having to do with the valet parking. In that location. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be within the property deed, but it would be uh referenced in the decision.
I was wondering if this would be a hangup, if we used E. As valet parking. But it says it has to be recorded in the deed. Would that make it tricky for an applicant? Cause it has to, it says special permit granting authority may grant a special permit. To locate the parking on a different lot. All such arrangements shall be presented by the proponent in writing, reviewed by town council. Approved by special permit and recorded with the property deed. Because it says and recorded with the property deed, does that make it? That they would have to do that? Like, is that something? We would wanna take out? Is there a reason why it's in section E?
See, I would uh be concerned about that requirement because you know, maybe this particular restaurant has an. Arrangement with a particular property owner.
Right.
And then that property owner sells the property. Then the new property owner shouldn't be held to that requirement. Or you know, maybe they. Uh they have the arrangement with a particular restaurant and then the restaurant changes hands. And then they no longer want to have that arrangement. So.
Yeah, I don't see the reason why it would have to go recorded with the property deed.
Right, this is what is written currently, and I don't know the original intent of section E.
Yeah.
Do you know, Lori, kind of what they were trying to get at with section E?
So I I think this has to do with shared parking.
Mm-hmm.
So remember, we have a requirement that's uh we have a section that provides flexibility. If you have uh if you wanna share parking with. Another property owner within five hundred feet. So there would be in a f- a formal agreement. I wouldn't say it has to be a deed. I mean, that's really formal.
Right.
Right.
But it there would be, you know, some sort of binding agreement, like a lease agreement, for example. I would imagine that the um owner of the parking lot would get some sort of money. For leasing their parking lot. To um you know, this this other business. But when that business changes hands, that agreement doesn't necessarily change hands.
So I'm just wondering if we use E. Should we update that? Or Lori also had a suggestion. To add a new, under E. Add a new. Um bylaw for valet parking, which includes more like. Um I think the valet parking area is not located in a residential zoning district is important. This is a kind of like what valet parking. Bylaw sounds like in other towns. So I'm not sure if the board members had a chance. To review E. Versus F, and if they were interested into allowing valet parking.
When did you send that? Cause I'm actually not, I don't have that that version.
It was a couple of months ago Lori sent it out here, um August nineteenth.
Oh.
But it looks like it maybe it didn't go, well, I think the top did go to the planning board. It was like a. It was a, it was buried in the bottom of an email that was like an email chain. Maybe it didn't go to everybody, but so we can forward this valet parking. That shows both versions to everybody to talk about next week, next month?
Yeah, I did not get that whole version. I got an abbreviated version.
Yeah, I'd be happy to email that out to everybody.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so I just kind of like for tonight, wanted to go through. Everything that everybody was bringing up and. And if, yeah, we could talk about it more next week or next month. Nobody wants it next week. And we can cut out mine, cause I think there was a version that I sent to you, Lori, and then you sent your version, so there were three versions.
Okay.
Um. And recently too, I, this is one I added that I'd wanna send out to people. This was, I was thinking about the downtown too. And um we were looking at some of the gas stations. And our definition of gas station. Includes routine vehicle maintenance or a car wash. And. The gas stations downtown are pretty small, but. I really wouldn't. Want a car wash downtown, just because we have so much traffic as it is. And gas stations right now are prohibited. But they could do probably nonconforming to nonconforming and add a car wash. And um so I was thinking that I would like to take out the car wash. Or add a footnote to filling station that say car washes are prohibited. In downtown business, business east and business west, just not on Main Street, like if the. Gas station on Route nine wanted a car wash. I don't think that's a big deal. But I think on Main Street, we're talking about traffic and cars queuing in and out and wanting a. Pedestrian friendly downtown. You wouldn't want a car wash. And we don't even have car washes in our bylaws, except for. Under a gas station.
Hmm.
I I wonder if um I know we've received some inquiries about folks who were interested in doing a car wash. On Route twenty in the highway business district, so maybe that would be a location where. It would be okay.
Where's Route twenty in the highway business? Is that by Marlboro?
Um so it's a highway business is on Route nine, but it's also the highway business southwest. So Route twenty over by North Borough.
Okay. Yeah, even there, I don't think it's a, it in my opinion, I don't know what the board thinks. In my opinion, in the highway business districts, I don't think, or industrial. But I do think on Main Street, Northborough, we didn't wanna add in the traffic.
Yep.
But for them to do that now, they would have to do a use variance, right? Because we don't allow car washes unless it's part of a gas station.
Uh we do, yeah, i- if it's um part of that service center, it's specifically allowed.
Right, but if it was just so it's going where BJ's Gases.
Yeah.
Like if it was a new empty parcel. Then you couldn't do a car wash unless it was. A gas.
Let me look at the definition. I can't remember off the top of my head.
It could be like a Jiffy Lube or something. As well, it doesn't necessarily have to be a gas station. It says related products or services, including routine vehicle maintenance services. So you could do like a Jiffy Lube with a car wash.
But it says auto filling or service station is a building or part of. With not more than three service bays where the principal activity is the sale of motor vehicle fuel.
And related products and services, including routine vehicle maintenance services.
Right, so it's.
So an oil change place, an oil change place would be a routine vehicle maintenance service.
Yeah. But I think principal activity is the sale of motor vehicle fuel. Plus related, I think, and related products, so they sell oil.
And services. Including, it says including right there.
Yeah.
Routine vehicle maintenance services.
Right, but I think the principal activity is the sale of motor vehicle, motor vehicle fuel and the other things. I don't think it's saying. It's an auto filling or service station. I don't think it's.
Sale of motor vehicle and related products, um motor vehicle products. So if it's the sale of motor vehicle fuel. And related motor vehicle products. And services, and services. I don't think that's actually very clear.
I I think. So I think that a car wash could be the principal use. So it says a building or part thereof with not more than three service bays. Where the principal activity is the sale of motor vehicle fuel and related products and services.
Right.
And then semicolon or a car wash. So it could be. It could be a car wash. A building or part thereof with not more than three service bays where the principal activity is a car wash.
I I don't think so. Because it's vehicle sales or service, like. It's an auto filling or service station. I think it's a gas, that's our definition for gas station.
Yes, I agree.
Right.
So it's saying where the principal activity is the sale of motor vehicle fuel and related products and services. Or a car wash.
Yeah, the semi.
It's either that or a car wash. Because of the semicolon.
Yep.
Even more reasoning why I'd wanna take it out then, cause I wouldn't want a car wash on Main Street.
Right.
Does it? Is it currently a special permit?
Uh prohibited on Main Street. They're not even allowed anymore, but I would think if somebody went for you, for a nonconforming to nonconforming. They could turn it into a car wash. If we didn't have like a footnote. That car washes are prohibited in downtown business, business east and business west. So that would allow it. In your other zones, but not downtown.
Well, the only, the only places where you can do it currently are highway business and industrial.
Right.
It's prohibited everywhere else.
Right. But the reason why I wanted the footnote. Is just to point out that they're prohibited in those zones, so say you did a use variance. If you um did not give, so they're nonconforming right now, right? So downtown. A car wash, I mean, a gas station is a nonconforming use. But if they wanted to do a nonconforming to nonconforming use.
Well, they could do that anyway under a use variance.
Yeah, they'd have to go for a use variance, which they'd have to show a hardship, but I'm just thinking if it was a nonconforming change. If there was a footnote saying your car washes are prohibited downtown, then they wouldn't allow the change.
Yes, they would, under a use variance.
Right.
They they have the same power to issue a use variance regardless of whether or not there's a footnote.
Right, I was talking about nonconforming uses, changing uses. Not, not a use variance. So nonconforming to nonconforming. The use variance, they could do anything, but they have a har- high bar, like we just talked about with White Cliffs. They'd have to be no other use downtown. Where if you have other uses in downtown business. That would fit at the gas station, it would be a high bar to allow something that's not allowed. Like a gas station or a car wash by use.
It's already prohibited, so I don't, I don't know what the benefit would be of prohibiting it twice.
Yeah, and to be honest, the the gas stations that are there, if you're talking about going from a nonconforming to a nonconforming. There's no way that you are gonna fit a. Car wash in any of those lots where those gas stations are. So they would have to remove the gas station. As soon as they do that, they're no longer nonconforming. Right? Cause they've removed the nonconforming piece, cause they're no longer a gas station. So now it's a new special permit.
Well, I think they can ask for a new use, right? If you're a nonconforming use. That happened before. If they were nonconforming use, cause they're prohibited.
But that, then you're in a use variance case.
No, they could do nonconforming to nonconforming.
No, you can't, no. No, you can, if you're a nonconforming use, so you, if you're a gas station. You can remain as a gas station, but you can't go from a gas station to like a manufacturing establishment. That would be a use variance.
Right.
It's only the gas station that's protected, that's it.
You could in the past, like that I tried to change that years ago. Cause um special permit, the zoning board of appeals may grant a special permit to extend or alter a nonconforming use. In accordance with this section.
So say, say, yes, you can do that. So say. You have a two pump gas station and they want to add a third pump. It's still a gas station. They could get a special permit to do that.
Right, but in the past, it would go from one nonconforming use to a totally different nonconforming use. That was years ago. I just don't want that to happen again, is what I'm, maybe times have changed and we've gotten stricter.
I just think it'd be confusing to double prohibit. I mean, you're prohibiting the use, so it's prohibited. You don't have to then double it up. But.
Okay.
I- if you're gonna get a use variance, then it doesn't matter that it's prohibited twice. You can still get a use.
Oh, I know. I was thinking about nonconforming to nonconforming though. You know, we have a section in our um. That says was prohibited. That you couldn't even get a use variance for it. I just, I'm al- always thinking of ways to better the downtown to keep it more pedestrian friendly versus allowing. Things that aren't pedestrian friendly, and that was one thing that popped into my mind.
Yeah.
So. The next thing on the list was the battery energy storage system. I did not look into this, but I was wondering if Lori, if you'd heard of it. But it's popping up more and more and a lot of towns. Have zoning about battery energy storage systems.
What, what exactly is that?
So, so that's if you have like a large scale solar farm. Then they'll do battery storage associated with that. So in order to make the um solar farm, you know, profitable and operate twenty-four hours a day. Uh you would need the uh battery storage. But um the only place. That allows the large scale solar farms is um the industrial district.
Okay, and are there towns I can look into it that, I think Shrewsbury was talking about doing one? But are there towns where they? Um collect used and spent batteries, or that would be hazardous waste, and they'd have to go through a hazardous waste by law? Say that. There was a collection area for like used batteries.
I think battery acid is considered hazardous waste.
Mm-hmm. I just wanted to throw it on there because I saw towns talking about. This, but I didn't look into it yet, so I'm going to um look into it. I I can look into it before our next meeting, maybe. To see what they were talking about. Okay, and then there were two more that came up under design review earlier in the year. Had to do, one had to do with donation bins, and I think that's gonna go under the Board of Health. And there's another one about storage container units that's still up in the air, whether it's gonna be under. Planning Board, um Board of Selectmen, or Board of Health. So I'm. Planning Board, um, Board of Selectmen, or Board of Health. So, I'm not gonna bring those up tonight. But.
When you say storage containers, what are you talking about?
The shipping containers.
Okay.
Like some towns have bylaws, there are those metal shipping containers.
Yep.
And the majority of them are temporary or they're used during construction.
Right.
So, we had talked about it earlier in the spring, Lori and Julianne and. And Steph and Bob. So.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep, we haven't decided which. Board. Should do it, should you do it in zoning? Should it be a Board of Selectmen? Some towns do it that way.
The, the one caveat with having it in zoning is that any existing shipping container. Anywhere in the town would be considered grandfathering, grandfathered. Whereas if it's uh, in the municipal code, there's no grandfathering. So, uh, having it in the municipal code would be beneficial if you're trying to regulate. Uh, shipping containers that already exist in the town.
Yep, okay, that makes sense.
Now, Lori, I just had a quick question. I don't know. If it did go through the Board of Selectmen and the municipal core code, that also has to go through town meeting, right?
Yes.
But they would talk about it when they talk about their warrants, it wouldn't have to have a public hearing with the planning board?
Um, no, no, so if uh, so. It all depends on who is going to be uh, enforcing the bylaw, so if. The bylaw is gonna be enforced by the Board of Health, then the Board of Health would hold the public hearing. If it's gonna be enforced by the selectmen, then the selectmen should hold the public hearing. And then the same with the planning board, so. Planning Board automatically holds public hearings for anything having to do with zone.
Okay. All right, well, thanks, everybody. Bill was the second person who emailed me, so he had brought up um, a bylaw idea to Lori.
Yeah, so the thought was, you know, we need to sort of um, get more local revenue. Um, and I keep seeing the uh, marijuana sales. Uh, places going up, I think Marlboro just had one go up like two miles from our town line. Um, so you know, I, I feel like we're missing out, we're missing an opportunity here. You know, we've got plenty of retail space. Here, and you know, to be honest, I think there's, oh, you know, this would be a better use than some of the ones that are being. Used or, or abused right now in downtown. So, I did a little bit of work, um, you know, that um, this can provide a little bit of local tax revenue. Um, the town can charge up to, up to three percent sales tax. Um, on marijuana facilities, just like alcohol, it's regulated by, you know, a state agency, the Cannabis Commission. Um, and you know, if people are worried about, you know, that it's being purchased or, you know, people are driving. While, while intoxicated, guess what? They're already doing it through our town. So, having, having the ability to gain town revenue, um, I think really isn't going to. Um, affect the situation. In fact, it makes it easier because if you think about it. Would you rather go to somebody and buy it illegally, or would you rather go somewhere and buy it legally? So. Um, that was my thought anyways, is, is adding that, you know, maybe to the town, the downtown. Uh, as well as Business East and Business West, um, and maybe even the Highway Business District.
Um, I had some comments. My main comment was, um, I was on the board in two thousand and eighteen, and when, um, it went to town meeting. And we went forth with two bylaws, and one was to allow it on highway business, and the other was to prohibit it. And I feel like in two thousand and eighteen, the residents voted to prohibit it. So, in my opinion, like, I wouldn't want to go change it. Because the people came forth in two thousand and eighteen and, and voted that way, and they took the time to show up and vote, so I think. I wouldn't wanna reverse it. And my second is, um, people move here for the schools. And we have a really good school system, and I looked up the towns that permit it and prohibit it. And a third of the communities have a ban like we do. And, you know, a lot of them are the towns with the good school systems, Concord, Carol, Dover, Sherwin, Hopkinton, Lexington, Lincoln, Subbury, Northborough, Westborough. But I just feel like we have. People move here because it's, you know, the good schools and family oriented, so. I don't know, in my personal opinion, I wouldn't wanna bring it forward to town meeting. And I look at our liquor stores that are on Main Street. And there are some of the ones with the blinking lights and the science galore. I just feel like. It would be another eyesore in town, and I actually didn't think it would be a good use on Main Street, but. I don't know if anyone else has opinion? Oh, Carter?
Um, yeah, I mean, when, when you had, when I got, we got the email, um, with that, I was kinda trying to, and I, I don't know all of the state. Rules, but I was trying to read through the, the state, um, laws about it, so. I remember, so it was legalized in twenty sixteen, and then towns that had voted. Majority against legalizing it, had the option to prohibit dispensaries within the town. Um, and then it was, I, I just was, I think there was something about that. They could also limit the number until for like five years, and then after that, if they allowed it, they would have to go through another. Ballot vote if they were adopting rules that would limit the number of them. Um, so is, and so I'm, I'm just like, if you were to change the rules to allow them, if you wanted to. Restrict the number of them, you would have to get a ballot vote, correct?
No, well, we could make it as part of the, you know, it would be up to the select board, just like the liquor licenses are now. Um, and so the, the select board could select how many they're going to allow in town. Um, one, two, you know, however many you can set um, limits, so. For example, within so many feet of a playground or, or school, or you know, other designated areas. Um, you can, you know, again, it's, it's pretty much the same as, as you know, the liquor stores are now.
Okay, and I will add my, my personal opinion is that the, um. The way that the state legalized it was not the correct way, and I believe that it has been proven to have been a mistake. Um, since then, that I, I would have preferred that, um, the state have complete control over, um. The cannabis industry like New Hampshire's liquor stores, um, but. And you know, the, the, the more we permit more businesses to do it, the, the harder it would be to. Transition that industry to one with more state control, so I would oppose this.
I don't think the, I think downtown would be frowned upon pretty heavily by the town residents. Um, I mean, if you could limit it, I guess I really fully don't understand what the answer is there, if it could be limited or not. Um, I don't think business south would be a big deal. Um. For the town, if we would limit it to that area, but given that, there's also one. I don't know, three hundred yards up the road from here, so I don't know if anybody would be, would be interested in going there or putting it there, but it's my two cents.
I mean, I think if you're gonna limit it to two, then that's not really a great revenue source. In itself, so that sort of defeats that argument of saying, well, we're gonna get revenue from it. Um, you know, I, I'm just curious in two thousand and eighteen, when it was voted down, does. Anybody, do you have any recollection of, of how strongly that was voted? Down to prohibit it?
Maybe the town clerk knows. I looked it up and I couldn't find numbers, it just said this motion did not pass. But I don't know that people voted it down, and it wasn't that long ago, so I hate to, you know, people showed up.
I mean, I do think that overall, some of the opinions of its use have changed in the last six years. Does that mean it's something that, that Northborough would be interested in? I, I couldn't tell. But I think it's worth, worth talking about, worth, thank you for bringing it up, Bill, appreciate it.
Yep.
I did look up, um, there's a cannabis control website too, and it had how much they make. Shrewsbury has two. Cannabis centers, and I wanna think they made under a hundred thousand each, which, I don't know, to me. I don't know. I don't think, we have, we have these reports that go through like our. Uh, and they're a hundred and two hundred thousand, I'd rather do one less report than. Than add pot shops to town.
Hmm.
But I guess that would be, yep, we can discuss it more next time if you guys want to.
Is that a hundred thousand a year?
Um, I think so.
Yeah.
And it was going down, like, I think, cuz I think cuz there are more and more, the first year they made more, and then. And, and then they went down, and there was one nearby too that. Just closed up shop and moved to Rehoboth, they moved off of Route Nine. And they moved their license.
Are you saying that that's their annual receipts, or that's how much the town's taking in taxes?
I don't know, and that's one thing too, is like, one thing I heard was that. Some of the money does go to the state, and then the state has to redistribute it back, but I don't know if that's true. I don't know enough about it, like, if you called Shrewsbury. If they get the hundred thousand, do they actually get that, or does it go to the state, and then the state redistributes it back to certain towns? I have no idea. I don't know.
Yeah, I think honestly to Carter's point, it's been a, a business that has been, uh, difficult to actually. They're not, a lot of them are closing cuz they're not making the money that, that they're working for.
Is there, like, if, if we wanna kinda keep having conversations about this, is there like, anyone from like the state or something who could come in and. Answer questions or?
I looked at the, the Cannabis Controls Commission themselves were having problems and.
Yeah.
Charge, and it seems like, I don't know, I don't know who you would bring in, but I know when it was. Prohibited here in Northborough, there was a group of residents that were really involved.
Hmm.
And, um, I don't know if they were involved with people in the state, and one of the main concerns is, is. In Massachusetts, they allowed THC up to like ninety percent, where like states like Vermont. You can only get THC up to like twenty percent. And over twenty percent is a huge problem, I guess, I mean, as far as affecting people and children and.
Hmm.
So, I don't, but that's also at the state level, our state allowed it to be whatever. And, um, they didn't have limits on it. I just know there are some like towns I drive through. And you can even smell it when you drive through. I mean, I wouldn't wanna drive through the downtown with scum constantly.
Well, but let's, let's be clear here, that they're not smoking facilities, right? If they're gonna smoke it, they're gonna smoke it anywhere, that's legal.
Oh, no, it still smells the building.
Great, great, but, but I'm just saying, that's legal in the state, right? So they're going over to Marlboro and giving Marlboro money, then coming back here and smoking it. That's, you know, that's what's happening now.
Right, I don't think it's the kids smoking it that I smelled. It was when I was in their town that had a whole bunch of them.
The product itself, some of them, those products have, unless they're all vacuum, you know, sealed, they're, they do have an odor.
So if you are.
Some do.
A shop, and you were trying to open up shop next to something like that, it might deter other businesses. Okay. All right, um, Carter, would you like to speak to yours?
Yeah, sure, I'm not sure if there's a way I can pull up the email that I sent, or if I can find it.
If you do the share button, once you open, I don't know, like, if it's an email, I cut and paste it into a Word document, and then. Share the Word document, but maybe you can share an email, I don't know, I, I probably can't.
All right, so. Working?
It is.
Hmm.
Okay. Okay, so I had a few things, I mean, not all of these do I actually. Kind of expect would be uh, anywhere near, near what, what would be presented, these are more topics I wanted to kinda. Kinda talk about and see if we wanted to do, um, anything with, um. I might not do this right in order cuz some of them are a bit more straightforward, um. So the one thing was, you know, allowing, um, hotel motels and conference center uses, um, I was thinking. Um. With the White Cliffs, if that is gonna be a, a wedding venue that, um, you know, we, we, you know. It would be likely that a wedding venue would draw visitors who'd be staying in hotels, um, and. Currently, if there's a wedding venue in Northborough, they'd probably stay in hotels in Marlboro, and just as Bill was suggesting with the. The cannabis dispensaries, it would, you know, we would rather get the, the tax revenue off of hotel, um. Well, not only the tax revenue from the hotels, but also if people are, are staying in closer to downtown Northborough, um, they would be. You know, if they go to a restaurant or go get, you know, pizza at Northborough House or anything, um. That they'd be doing, they would be doing more in Northborough as opposed to in Marlboro, and um, that would support. Get us tax revenue and support businesses in the area, um, I know that. Allowing something like that in the Business East, I'm sure would, um, depending on the exact. Um. Property that it's on would concern a lot of the, the residents, as you know, everything with the White Cliffs had kind of raised alarms, um. With, with a lot of the neighbors, so I would definitely want, if we were to allow it, but in, in Business East, I'd want it to be a special permit, so. Um, neighbors can kind of object to it, and that could be, could be halted, um. I believe it is currently allowed in a few of the other, um, business districts. I think Business East is kind of the outlier in that.
Yeah, I see it allowed in every other district but Business East. In the, in the zoning book, page seven forty-seven, and I actually tried to research without reading all the minutes. Why it's everywhere but Business East? I asked AI too, we went through all sorts of iterations, and they couldn't figure it out either.
Again, I think my guess is, I, I think because. The Business East is so like integrated into a neighborhood, it might have been, or both parts, only parts of the Business East. Are like integrated into a neighborhood, and so people might have been concerned about that, but, um. Others are, you know, I mean, closer to like Bartlett Street, and beyond that, I think that the Business East goes, that is, it's a lot. Less directly abutting people's houses, that might be more appropriate, um. Which is also why I had suggested maybe. In potentially kind of considering whether the Business East District should be one, um. District, or whether wanting to split that, so you can kinda recognize, well, this part's more. Of the downtown, and it's surrounded by houses versus this part that's more clearly, um. You know, a business one, not really as close to other things. Um, same thing with the, the multifamily dwellings, I also think that's another thing that most. Most of the business districts allow, except oddly the Business East. Um, and I again wasn't sure, sure why.
I know the answer to that one. That was actually um, a citizen's petition in two thousand and twelve. And they worked really, really hard to prohibit it there, so that one I actually wouldn't wanna do, because I know they worked really hard to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess. It's, I, I don't know, I, I do think though that um. You know, the state wants more housing to be built and now we have, you know, our. Inclusionary zoning thing that would apply to, to some of the multifamily projects that um. You know, again, wanting it by a special permit, so there would, it would be um, pretty well. Vetted to do it, but um, that, that is something that I think you could, we can look into to see if um. It might make sense now more than it did in two thousand twelve.
I know some of the residents that brought it forward, so they could come to the meeting, I know that they worked super hard on it though.
And then, yeah, the, the home occupation uses, um, I, I wasn't sure if this would even like have any effect on anything. Um, cause the home occupations are basically like you can have certain very kind of. Minimal business uses at your house, um, and they're allowed in, I think all of the residential um. I might be wrong about that, um, but most of the residential um, districts. But they're not allowed in the business districts and I wasn't sure if it's because it would be. Redundant that you could have a house and your, a business in business, or if this would be something that you ordinarily would not. Have a house on and if you change that, so um, again, just kind of trying to get more. Creative kinds of businesses closer to the downtown area that if. If somebody wanted to live where they operated their business, I, I wouldn't see an issue with that.
I just wanna ask one quick question. I know one thing in some of those districts, there are multifamily homes. And I know as a board, we once had a discussion whether or not to allow home occupations in multi. Family homes, only cause you're sharing that building and those walls with other neighbors. So I didn't know if that was the reason they weren't allowed, like. Is it fair to have a multifamily building and then having your neighbor running a business next door? You know, I can see in a single family home where it's your house. And you're doing it, then I think that's fine, but if it's a multifamily building, like. It might hurt the rental units if all of a sudden people are running businesses out of them, but. That's, I think was discussed once.
And as for the Business East District, uh, residential uses aren't allowed. So I think that that was um, probably the philosophy for not allowing home occupations.
Yeah.
Um, then again, I, this, this was, I think, um, I, I was kind of thinking about, again, if. Does White Cliffs things goes through and there are visitors to town, um, wanting to. Spark more creative businesses that would potentially benefit from. Um, increased kind of foot traffic in the area, um, I also think. You know, something that somebody would, would want to live with, next to, in like inside of their business would probably be. Less kind of concerning business uses to neighbors, um, and might be, be more appropriate um. To encourage. The requiring a special permit for data processing and record storage, um. That is, I mean, I know a lot of the kind of newer data processing centers, I, I've read about that they're kind of. Um, you know, within the past few years, there's been a growth in those being built, um. I think there, there are benefits to that, that they, um, depending on how they're built, they can, you know, be. Good like tax revenue sources and minimally um, using town services, but also um. They can sometimes have concern and um, putting that as a special permit might. Let us, you know, vet those and um, put conditions on them that um. Might make sure that anything that were to come into the town would be more appropriate for a town than um, kind of blindsiding people.
Aren't those, aren't those typically things that have to be in certain areas and. Generate a lot of heat, electricity, need thermal management, is that?
I mean, some of them, I'm, I'm not sure, like. Again, I don't know a whole lot about all of them, I know, like, I think that is some of them and those kind of things would be. Included in this, um, and, but. I'm also, I'm also thinking that might also have been written. Older and that might have been having different things in mind than um, what. What current kind of data processing centers are.
Is there any way you can share that with us, what the data processing centers are like currently? Like not right now, but for the next meeting?
Yeah, cause I, I mean, if I, if I understand correctly, a lot of these are in fairly. I'm not gonna say remote areas, but not, not near towns, businesses.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know why, but I thought it was because number one, they had a pretty big electrical draw. Cause they need thermal management.
Yeah, I think that is some of it.
Air conditioning, lots of, like I said, thermal management, but. I'm not an expert.
No, but. This one, um, I know a lot of people, um. Have, you know, complained about a lot of the, the smaller houses being torn down and very large, expensive. Single family houses being built in town and that's kind of a common complaint I hear, um, and so I guess my, my question was whether um. You could, you know, put, I guess, more of a process to, for the design and construction of those, um. So, I mean, I think, you know, any multifamily or any duplexes require. I think a site plan review and mostly a special permit, um, and I'm not sure why we would want to, um. Had, it would be more difficult to build, I guess, a small duplex versus a very large. Single family house that would probably have people complain more about than, than a duplex.
Lori, are there some parameters to how big you can put something based on what was the footprint of the existing or pre-existing? Building?
Uh, so of course we have setback requirements and we have lot coverage requirements, so the lot coverage requirement. Is what's um, is, explains the maximum size that a house can be.
Hmm.
So, I, I know that there are some communities that do require. Uh, special permits for single family homes, but I would not recommend it. I think there's gonna be a lot of pushback with that.
Yeah.
That's really gonna drive up the cost of uh, development in town.
But I thought there was also a certain percentage that you couldn't go larger than, if you took down. I think Carter's example is, you know, people tearing down small houses and putting large ones. Maybe even on a, a, a lot that could um, that could support it zoning wise. But I thought there was also a limit. As far as percentage wise.
Only in the groundwater protection overlay district. So there is a requirement that says that you can't increase the amount of impervious surface. Above and beyond fifteen percent of what was originally um, impervious. So, but that, that is limited to the groundwater protection overlay district, so. If you're outside of that, you, you can go large, but that's a, that's lot coverage. So, if you wanna have smaller footprints for houses, then. Uh, you would adjust a lot coverage requirement.
No, I guess what I was saying is I thought, and, and maybe I'm not, uh, maybe I'm wrong, I thought there was something. In the code, building code that said you can't go, let's say you have a, you know, for ease of, of um. calculation, a thousand square foot house, and you wanna take that down. And put up a four thousand square foot house, even if the lot would support it. I didn't think you could go more than fifty percent bigger than what was already the foot, footprint without a special permit.
That would be if it was non-conforming, like if there was a non-conforming, like multifamily. And it came down and they wanted to build it bigger, I think it's up to fifty percent, if you're putting up another non-conforming. Like. Yeah.
Well, there, there is, it, it doesn't say fifty percent. Um, but if, if you have a non-conforming structure. And you want to add on to the non-conforming structure, then um. You, well, it depends on what type of structure it is, uh, there are different requirements for single family and two family versus other uses. But um. You, you may need a, a special permit from the zoning board of appeals.
Like if it's a multifamily and it's, they don't allow multifamily in that neighborhood anymore, but it burns down. Then you would have to get a special permit.
Yeah, so we had the case with one twenty-nine Maple Street, so it was a five unit. So it burned, uh, so they wanted to build another uh, five unit, five bedroom structure. They needed a special permit from the zoning board of appeals in order to do that, because. They were increasing the footprint, the size of the um, the structure. So, that would trigger a special permit, but if you have a perfectly conforming, so say. Say you have a non-conforming structure. In, uh, but your lot is conforming, so it's one thousand square feet, to use your example. So if you were to demolish that structure and you wanted to build a new structure. Then you would have to make that structure conforming. So you would have to adhere to all your setback requirements, you would have to adhere to your lot coverage requirements. Um, and so the, the point is to convert the non-conforming structure into a conforming structure. So, but it, it could be bigger.
Yeah.
As long as you can fit a four thousand square foot house within the. Requirements, then there's no problem with you building that.
Okay, interesting.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I, um. I don't know, my, my, I guess my kind of question is, is trying to think of ways to um, incentivize the construction of smaller homes and. Disincentivize the construction of larger homes, um, and um, uh. I mean, again, I, you, you, you mentioned that it would potentially raise the cost of development, but would that really only affect? The cost if you're trying to build a home that's larger than what, whatever we set the kind of size to matter.
So you're, you would require a special permit for single families over a certain size, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, or even just a site plan review, I'm not sure, a, a special permit might be overly restrictive, but um. That would, you know, at least kinda say, okay, well, you might have to, uh, you can add conditions, I guess, to, to building um. A home larger than a certain size, or even do a special permit if, if that was preferred.
I think my only concern here, coming from um, back a decade ago where I was in an HOA. Right, we don't wanna become an HOA, we don't, we shouldn't be telling people what they can do with their lots, as long as it fits. Within the regulations that we have, I would be very concerned of us. Telling people, you know, where does it stop, oh, you can't use this color, or you can't have this style of house, right? I, I really would be concerned, if they can pay for it and they have, and they go out and they find the lot and they buy the lot. They can do whatever they want with that lot, right? I wouldn't want anyone telling me what I can do with my house, I wouldn't wanna be telling anyone what they can do with theirs. That's just my opinion.
And, and also remember that there is, um, you know, the land disturbance and stormwater management bylaw. Which kicks in at one acre of land disturbance, so. Um, you know, there, there is that level and of course. If they're within a hundred feet of a wetland or two hundred feet of a perennial river, then they would have to go to the conservation. Commission for approval, um, but uh. Yeah, I, 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 I think um, doing site plan review for single family homes is gonna be. Super unpopular and it is going to be a huge increase. Because now they're going to have to hire a uh. An engineer or a land surveyor to prepare a site plan. They're gonna have to hire an architect, uh, well, chances are they would already have an architect, uh, in order to submit the. Uh, building permit plans, but uh, there would be a filing fee, then there's an advertising fee. Uh, so that would probably be six hundred and fifty bucks for that. Um, but definitely the site plan, that would cost a couple of thousand dollars. Uh, not to mention the time it takes, so, uh, that's asking a lot for a single family.
And I also don't think that there would be a way to really govern it if they built a certain size and then. Well, they, now they wanna put on an, an addition, or they wanna modify a few things and now you gotta go back and have everything redone. Um, or limit what they can do, if their family expands, what are you gonna do?
I mean, I suppose and, and ADU would be a separate um. Thing that would be allowed without, or with, I guess it would also still be a site plan review, I think, right? But, I mean, again, I, I, I'm just noticing that um. The large, the construction of large homes is a controversial issue in the town and I'm simply um. Trying to come up with possible ways to create regulations that would um, kind of disincentivize that. Um, and I, I guess I'm, I mean, if, if it's, if it's specifically the, the site plan. Or um, special permits, that's an issue and there's other ideas that people have, I think that's fine. Um, or is it that people are, um, you know, opposed in principle to wanting to. Encourage smaller homes from being built and discourage larger homes.
I think with the developers, what they say too is the prices of the lots are so expensive. So for them to put a small house on it and sell it cheaper, I don't know if they're making money, I don't know. Like, is it worth it for the developers to buy, spend all that money and, and I'm just saying, that's what they've said. That's what I've heard from developers is that they're not gonna recoup. Their money if they buy a big lot and put a small house on it. Whether that's true or not, I don't know.
And I, I, I do think the residents would, would probably not pass this anyways.
Right, yeah.
Not because they don't, not because they're against small houses or, you know, you know. For big, big ones, I just don't think that they, to, a bit to Bill's point, I don't think they would want that type of oversight on their. Personal properties.
And would probably have to hire another staff person.
Yeah, you're right. But I, I, I think you're doing a great job with the, coming up with these new ideas about how to be creative and looking at things in a very. Um, I would say unique way, I think this is great.
Um, and so, yeah, they've, the other two I have, um. Whether certain light industrial uses could or should be allowed closer to the town center. Um, that one is mostly, I mean, I, it, I believe it actually is. Again, a recent or recent, like, I think it's, it was part of the two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Zoning change that removed the um, like downtown industrial zone, um. But, I mean, a lot of those businesses are still there, um, from then and. Thinking about like downtown revitalization, um. Wanting to get like employers that would create foot traffic in the downtown area, I think is kind of. Essential to that, I mean, my. Opinion on why Northborough's downtown is kinda dead is because nobody really is spending time downtown during the daytime when. Cause most people work out of town who live in town, so um, during the workday. Northborough is not a very lively place except for the employers on. Northborough is not a very lively place except for the employers on the edge of town. Um, and so trying to get employers closer to the center of town um could be. Beneficial to, to re- revitalizing downtown. Um. I'm not sure I would revive the industrial zoning district completely, but if there's some of the kind of light. Industrial uses that could be made allowed in um some of, some of the districts closer to. To the town center that um would be more like what I'm thinking.
What did you have in mind? Like, what is a light industrial use that you would think of?
In the um. The zoning bylaws we have, like, find them. Well, yeah, there's, there's, I mean, there's one that's um light manufacturing. I. Don't remember exactly the definition of that, um, but I thought that might have been reasonable um. Printing and publishing and research and development. I mean, there's. Like, some of the industrial uses that are listed that aren't like warehouses or something like that. Um, that, again, with a special permit probably um. That like might be appropriate and not um as kind of. Negative to a downtown area or a business district.
Yeah, I, I, I myself don't think that those would. Align well with the downtown Main Street residential. Business, east business, west corridor. Um, I think we have. A good amount. I, I see your point about trying to bring. You know, people into our downtown. I agree with you that, that we do have a downtown that uh needs. A bit more activity. I'm not sure that that, that's. The right um approach for that. The right fit. I'm not, in that, my personal opinion.
I agree. I think that's kind of why they moved it to the outskirts, like industrial is usually on the. Near the highways on the outskirts. I know light industrial has meant a lot of things in town and. I think even Staris fell under light manufacturing, so.
It did, and that was the concern.
And that's not really a downtown business. The downtown businesses are usually smaller, like bagel shops, donut shops.
I, I guess my, my point though is if nobody's downtown during the daytime, what do those businesses even? I mean, that's why there's like not a lot of those businesses um. In the downtown is, I, I think it's. The, the people who live in town don't work in town. Um, and so there's not, or a lot of people. You know, I, I, I think a vast majority of, of people who live in town are probably commuting to other. Areas and then the people who are working in town work away on the edge of town away from anything. Um. And so, I mean, again, I whether, I guess I'm just. Something to think about in addition to just retail stuff is what are some kind of large employers? That might be appropriate to put um, maybe not right on Main Street, but even on like where. The Harvey property currently is. I mean, that's an industrial um business and if they were to want to sell that. Something else could go there or um, you know, some of the other, just like. If, if any of the, some of the old strip malls end up, kind of every business closes and somebody wants to build. Some kind of an office or some kind of very minimally, you know. Invasive kind of um. Light industrial use, for lack of a better word. Um. You know, to just kind of review, I guess, some of that in the downtown area of what. Other things that aren't just like retailer or food kind of um service businesses might be appropriate.
I think in some ways that a, a big issue would be parking. That even if you did have a large employer, you don't have a place to put the employees.
Yep.
At this point, yeah.
Um, and then the other one that is, I think, probably the one I've have. More, I guess, thought out than the others um was, so the um. The open space residential development bylaw um only. That is so basically that's the, you can kind of build more um. You know, if, if you allow part of the property to be kind of protected. Common open space, you can kind of, you know, build either more entire density of, of housing on a lot or um. You know, more units, I guess, than you would otherwise. Um, that. The way it's written only applies to the residential A and B districts, and I believe this actually was. Talked about um a few years ago and there was kind of concern about it in the residential C because. A lot of that is um suburban neighborhoods, but there's also a good amount of it that is. Open space that I think would be worth protecting with something like this. Um, so my kind of thought was if you. Write a new bylaw that's kind of similar to what we already have um for those that would. Extend to the residential C um, maybe even make it a multifamily thing or just. Straightforward and similar to what is already the case in A and B um. You know, you could kind of allow for development of some properties while also still protecting some of the open space um. In, in town. Um, this was kind of what I was thinking. Would have been ideal for parts of the Westboro State Hospital property if the state was selling land um. And, you know, but we don't necessarily want just suburban neighborhoods built all over that side of town. You can kind of. Consolidate a lot of it. Um, other properties would be if. Sometime in the future, say, um, the golf course were to close and they wanted to redevelop it or the, the driving range or some of those other large. Um, where currently more or less open space um. Wanted to redevelop, you can kind of give them ways to, instead of just building another. Sprawled out suburban neighborhood, you can kind of allow for more um compact development and open space protection.
I, I actually really like this idea. Um, I am not a big fan of the current open space. Community bylaw. Um, especially the fact that in order to. Qualify, you have to go to town meeting and have the land designated. Uh, uh, to be included within the overlay. Um, I think we could do a lot better than the current bylaw. Um, by making it easier to do a cluster type style. Um. I, I've written a couple of these in the past and there are some aspects of the bylaw that I really like. Um, but. The, the way uh the zoning is in Northborough is that. The preference is the sprawly type of conventional subdivision. Where every bit of land is consumed by roadways and house lots. Whereas in the open space uh design, typically you have. Roadways, lots, um. But you also have large expanses of contiguous open space. That is permanently prote- protected, that everybody in the development can enjoy. Uh, for recreation purposes, you could have, you know, uh, walking trails through there. Um, if it's sensitive habitat, then it could just be woods. Um. But that is a better way of protecting the community character. Than just uh having suburban sprawl all throughout the town. And under that configuration, you can per- permanently protect open space at no cost to the town. So instead of having to rely on CPA to purchase and protect open space. The open space can be protected, you know, maybe not the entire parcel. Um, but a good chunk of it can be protected um. And still allow the same number of units. So if it was gonna be a hundred units, you still have a hundred units. But instead of sprawling them over the entire uh parcel of land. You have them on a s- a smaller section of land with balance being open space. So uh, if you folks are on board with that, I would, I would love to. Uh, take a crack, uh, work a, work with you folks on revising that bylaw.
Didn't, didn't we have something similar come before us off that water area?
Ridge Road.
Ridge Road. That, I mean, they came up with a pretty good design and they, but they were using the open space. Um, residential development. And I thought that was, it had a bolt ramp they had proposed. And some of the land was a bit on the boggy side, but you know. I thought they, I mean, they'd come up with, I thought, a pretty good. A, a pretty neat design, used basically applying open space.
Are you talking about the seventy-five ridge, the common driveway?
Yep.
Yeah, so in that case, there is no permanently protected open space, actually. Um, there is because um, you know, there are no build areas. That the conservation commission set. Um, but all of that land is either common driveway or lots. Uh, so under this configuration. Um, that I'm talking about, like if we were to redo the, the bylaw. Say you have a hundred acre parcel, um, uh, the bylaws that I've written in the past. Fifty percent right off the top of the block would have to be permanently protected open space. So you know you're gonna get fifty acres of permanently protected open space. Um, the last one that I writ- wrote said that of the fifty acres of permanently protected open space. Twenty-five uh. Acres, so fifty percent of the open space had to be upland. So it had to be buildable, usable land. It also uh provided um standards that said that it had to be contiguous. It had to have like special features of the land, like scenic views or. Um, you know, special habitats or, or, or whatever. Um, but anyway. Yeah, I'd be happy to answer more questions, but I, I think that this would be worth pursuing.
Okay. But there's no density bonus, right? It's just, there's a formula where it's. It's apples for apples, right? So if you could do twenty houses currently. You can still do twenty houses, but now they're like closer to the road and not as sprawled out.
So the one that I wrote, um, it was apples for apples. So it was, y- y- you would provide, so it was a byright process. So it wasn't a special permit, but they required site plan review. So you would have to provide a yield plan to demonstrate how many units you could get um. Under a conventional layout. Um, so that would become your basic maximum number. And then, uh, in that community, we were trying to incentivize certain things. So we were trying to incentivize uh permanently protecting a greater amount of open space. Um, and also the creation of recreation amenities. So we did have a density bonus for doing things like that. And uh, at that time, we were also interested in um. Doing senior housing, so there was an incentive for that and for rooftop solar. Um, but. That's, you know, of course, up to debate whether you wanted to do that or not. In that particular bylaw, we did allow uh, single family home, two family home and triplexes. And we did allow condominium style development. Uh, we did specify that all structures had to be a minimum of twenty feet apart. Um, so, but the, all of that is uh something that can be worked out. Uh, through the bylaw development process, so uh, we could go with that or we could go with something different.
One thing I was just a little bit, when I was kind of trying to read what we currently have, um, there's like two different. Sections, so there's the one that's the. Open space residential development and the other is the open space planning overlay district. Do you? Know what the difference between those two are?
So the, the overlay district just covers the residential B district. And only a portion of the residential B district. And uh, that's the one that I was talking about where you had to go to town meeting to have. Uh, certain properties included within the overlay.
They wrote it specifically for Baglo Farm. Should it sell? It was for that property only.
So the, the one that I wrote, um, and like I said, I'm just using this as an example. Um, what we did is we allowed it in all of the residential districts. And then we specified that there had to be a hundred foot. Um, buffer, open space buffer around uh any of these neighborhoods. So that way, if there was a big difference in the density. Uh, between the, the regular uh conventional. Neighborhoods versus this new neighborhood, it wouldn't look so funny, like there'd be. Um, you know, that open space area in between to transition.
Did you have to have a certain amount of acres? Cause it seems like. It would make sense if you had a certain amount of acres, but if you're little properties, then. Developers could take advantage of that, maybe, I don't know, but I would take you.
We did specify a, a minimum acreage. I think in that case it was five acres. But it really depends on uh what district you're talking about, like, you know, it, it might make more sense to. Make it larger, you know, ten acres. So they really get something usable, some sort of usable open space out of it.
Sorry. Is this something similar to what got presented to us in that property across from Harvey, across Hudson Street? Where they were gonna leave sort of the top of the hill as, as trails and open space and then build at the bottom? Something, is that what you're thinking? Something along that line?
Yeah, it's similar, like in that case, um, a lot of the open space that they were setting aside was unbuildable anyway. So under the scenario that I'm talking about, some of that open space would have to be like buildable land. Have to be usable.
Yeah, so you just couldn't give wetlands or hot, steep slopes that no one could really use.
Right.
Cause I can see how that could, you could take advantage of that. We don't have that many big parcels left, do we? I don't know for sure.
I was looking, I mean, there are, um, I mean, I would, again, it's. The, what, what I was thinking though is also, I mean, if the state is selling some of its land involving Westboro State Hospital, that. Would be quite a lot of, of this. Um, there's also, again, things like the golf courses and. Um, I guess any of the, the farms that are, that are larger that exist. I mean, some of those have some level of protection, but. Um, if they were going, I mean, there's, I mean, even like that, that, there are. There are quite a few properties. I mean, I know like the open space committee has been. You know, interested in, in looking at, um, but this, this would be kind of a, a way to. Protect some of the, the land without buying it. Um. But, yeah, the, the, it's not like there's, there's no large properties left in town. I mean, there are. Quite a few.
Okay, I think we can think about this one too and.
Yeah.
Circle back to it next month. We'll leave um zoning bylaw amendments on the. On the. Agenda. I do get, the only thing with multifamily, I do get concerned, cause I did. I did review the, you know, the master plan, which was just done in twenty twenty. And if you read the survey questions, it was like. Stop the condos, stop the duplexes, no high density, so. I think we have to be cognizant of that too, like I think this open space. Um, bylaw could work and I actually went to a class on it. A couple of years ago and brought it up, but um. I do think we have to be. Cognizant of the master plan too and how high density, how, you know, the density of it.
Yeah, I mean, just. Look at what we went through with MBTA, right? Look at what we went through with MBTA, right?
I just wouldn't, I definitely wouldn't want a bonus density. All right, were there any more?
I mean, the only other thing I had on the email was the uh historic districts, if the planning board has any role in. You know, if, again, if if you wanted to be changing some of the um you know, what can be built where down town, if there was any um, you know, landmarks you wanted to have some kind of protection. But I think that's the Historic District Commission more than the Planning Board. So, um, but that was just something I wanted to be aware of if we were gonna change and kind of, you know, encourage things being built in areas if there was any kind of landmarks you wanted to protect or something.
That'd be good to meet with them. Like, would you ever go to one of their meetings and ask them or?
I mean, I could, you know.
Uh, Millie's the rap too.
I, and and we have, we've talked about it, it hasn't really um materialized into any type of of formal process. It it it's quite, quite involved.
And I think too, they worried, at least when they talked about it, doing on a case by case bas- basis, they wanted buy-in from the owner. Cause it can be very onerous for them tying their hands, so. Okay, well, I'm glad we get to talk about all these tonight.
Thank you for bringing them up, guys.
Yes, thank you. Next on the agenda are um A and R's lot releases and bonds. None? For tonight? Okay, oh, one thing I wanted to say during the White Cliffs meeting, which I forgot, is that there is a walkthrough on Friday, so if anybody's listening again, there's a walkthrough on Friday from twelve to two. And then the select board has a meeting September twenty-second, and I think they're taking public comments. And they said there's gonna be a second info session in October, but the date hasn't been selected. And the town meeting is November third. I meant to say that before. Um, I did see that they did sell that Lyman Street property. They sold it for five hundred and fifty thousand, but I don't know who bought it. That's pretty cheap for five point four five acres.
That's
I have, I have a meeting with the new buyer uh with a few of us. I believe it's on Thursday.
Okay. Somebody you know, or no?
Uh, we did meet previously before uh the purchase. They am familiar with them. I I think it'll be a good use. So it's a a kind of similar to what was originally approved. So their intention is to build it out in conformance with that decision that was rendered a number of years ago. One Lyman Street.
Oh, I was talking about the Westboro State land.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was uh think of the wrong property. Okay, yeah. Spoken with the person who purchased a zero Lyman yet.
Okay, I did see that it did, but it didn't have the name of the person, only the price.
Oh, so the the um state property sold, is that what you said?
Yep, on September tenth. Five point four five acres of flat land for five hundred and fifty thousand. And they can do four units per acre, so they should be able to recoup their costs, I would think, but I don't know, I'm not a builder. Yeah. All right, next on the agenda, we have the minutes from September second. Um, I noticed Carter, you had some changes. Did anybody else have any changes?
I think there was just one grammatical one. Did that one get corrected? It said justice instead of jester- jester- I forgot, I don't have where that is though, sorry. Let's see.
Be under the MVP, I think, but I didn't look, I mean, I have it up here.
It's a downtown re- revitalization. Last page, fifth sentence in. Environmental justice community, nothing big.
Uh, environmental justice, that's right.
Or maybe it's spelled wrong on yours, Millie.
It says, oh, maybe it came out wrong on mine, mine says jester-.
I I'll verify on the one that uh becomes final, I will make sure it says justice.
Justice.
I'm just looking at mine fast, I don't even see it. Okay.
Uh, I see, there are two justices, one spelled right, the other one's not.
Okay, hearing no more changes, do we have a motion to approve the September second, twenty twenty-five minutes as amended?
So moved.
Okay, I'll give it to Millie and Carter, um, roll call vote, Carter Brennan?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
Bill Pierce?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Um, I think I see Jacob Jones, you have your hand up?
Yeah.
Okay, do you have a question, Karen, that with our last, probably with the discussion about Lyman Street?
You're on mute, Jacob.
How's that? Sorry, Jacob Jones, one six Green Street, just wanted to make sure you had the information for the open sessions on the White Cliffs. You had um the twenty-second is correct, the select one meeting on the twenty-second. We're also cognizant that a widely recognized holiday starts that evening and we wanted to make sure everyone um, you know, feels welcome to comment. So we have a second meeting that I I'm fairly certain we recently chose to be Oc- October sixth.
Oh, okay.
So if you can't make one or the other, you know, we made two. And then um, I believe in between their appropriations was going to meet again, uh, they just met yesterday. I watched their meetings, appropriation is also looking closely at the lease language and things like that. So they're also meeting, I think, in between those two meetings, just wanted to let you know.
Okay, thank you. All right, next on the agenda are subcommittee updates, does anyone have any updates?
No.
We met in um a design review committee meeting and we met with thirteen Church Street and um it's moving forward. Well, it's, we're continuing design review, we have one more meeting next month in October. We're still trying to finalize a date. So, um that's what we discussed. Um, I see our next planning board meetings are October seventh and October twenty-first. So far, Lori, the only thing on October seventh are these um bylaws?
Correct.
Okay, we can talk to them more in detail, we could cross off some that we decided not to move forward with. If anybody has any of theirs to take off, um, just forward it to Lori. If you remove them, like, I guess if everybody says the gas station is duplicate, I can take that off. But it would help to narrow it down for next meeting, if there are some that people feel like they wanna pull off. And the next CBA meeting is September twenty-third, do you have anything on that?
Uh, we have two public hearings, uh, so one twenty-nine Maple Street, uh, will hopefully be wrapping up. And then we have a new public hearing for twenty-nine Rice Road. Uh, that one is in addition on an existing home, it's a dimensional variance. Uh, it's a corner lot, so that means that they have two front yard setbacks. And um they wanna put the addition on the side of the house. So that would be fifteen feet from the uh property line on one of those front yard setbacks. So.
Thank you. Um, does anybody, oh, master plan says October sixteenth, but the date is fluid right now, I think it's changing. And other than that, does anybody have anything that they wanted to add? Hearing none?
Just one more. At our last meeting, um, we had like a very last minute addition to our meeting thing. Um, and I was kind of caught off guard by that, I didn't feel like I had enough time to um look over even the email. I like was signing on and saw there's another um thing on it. Um, and also, it's not that I think anyone would care about that one in particular, but for the the naming of the common driveway um, in case some neighbor had some objection that we, that isn't obvious to the board um, to a name, I I kind of think in the future, we would want something like that to be publicized on the agenda. Um, so I don't know if, just as a comment, if if we can kind of have like a deadline to um have those materials submitted, so they can be on the agenda in the future.
Yeah, well, definitely try, that's been like since the beginning of times. It's gotten way better than it was twelve years ago or ten years ago. But um, we're always getting last minute things, it's just some small things, we try to get them done because you hate for a developer to have to hold up their project for two more weeks or another month. But um, so sometimes we have old business, new business.
And then sometimes, as did happen, we do approve a name and then turns out that it's actually not an appropriate one. So we have to go back and unimprove it.
I think that's happened twice.
So there's always a, a, you know, a safety valve when that happens, yeah.
Establish a rules or something like that, that's written, so it's consistent or whatever, but.
I think there is one, I think Lori has at the bottom of her email, it has to be submitted a week, at least a week in advance, right? But major thing, it'd be Lori's desk like a month in advance, cause she has to review it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I I try, 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 doesn't always work the way I wish.
But we are way better than it used to be. And big problem, big pro- projects are the worst, you get all the emails like the afternoon of the meeting.
Gosh, yeah.
Those other big projects we had. But, but it's a good point. Okay, um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, um, Carter Brennan?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin? Millie Milton?
Aye.
Bill Pierce?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. All right, good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye, thanks.